And I would like to call the school board meeting to order for today's date, November the fourteenth. And now you can lead us in our pledge, baby.
Spanish?
You're gonna, oh, she's gonna do, uh, Spanish and then she's gonna do English.
Yo prometo leatar a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República que representa una nación bajo Dios indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No, you don't go anywhere. Have to stay, stay. Giselle. Now, you did an amazing job on the pledge.
Thank you.
I would've joined you, but I don't speak Spanish. But I surely would like to learn from you. How are you today?
Good.
Good. Are you shy? A little bit? But you surely are cute.
Thank you.
And where do you go to school, baby?
I go to Medell Elementary School.
And what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. So where, are you going to school next year? Do you know yet?
No.
Are you excited about finishing out your last year there?
Kind of.
Kind of, kinda sad, I'm sure. Uh, what do you like most in school? What's your favorite subject?
I like, um, science and math.
Science and math. And what are you gonna do with that when you become an adult? Do you know yet?
I think I wanna be a scientist.
Wow. That would be just awesome. I met a scientist the other day. It came to Girls Inc. from Florida Southern. It's amazing. You can do it, especially with your, uh, uh, love for math and science. So who did you bring with you today?
My mom.
Where is she? Hi, Mom.
Hi.
Who else?
My sister.
Hi, sister.
And my stepdad, Cameron.
Hi. And who else?
My principal, Ms. Richardson.
I was gonna say. I was gonna say, I thought that was Ms. Richardson, but you looked like you didn't know that was your principal. You did a great job today. Thank you so much for coming, and we hope that you have a, a good, uh, holiday season.
You too.
All right. Thank you. Yes?
Are you fully bi- bi- bilingual? Can, do you speak Eng- English and Spanish e- equally fluent?
Well, absolutely, but I can speak really well in Spanish.
Well, I, I, you know, I was a Spanish double ma- major in college, spent four months in Spain, and I don't speak it as well as, as you speak it. In fact, in fact, keep, keep using it, because if you don't, it'll go away. But that's a tremendous skill. It's a skill that many, many people don't have, and it will be to your advantage for a very long, long time. So we're, we're proud of you.
All right, I've already called the meeting to order. The next item on the agenda is to accept today's, uh, board meeting agenda. And Ms. Jackie, I know we have some revisions?
Yes, we do. Item C seven, approve minutes of the October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen school board meeting at backup. Item C fourteen, new administrators at backup. Item C fifteen, accounts receivable write-off for school year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, Ridge and Travis, remove backup. Item C forty-five, recommendations for non-instructional personnel actions, replace backup. And item R fifty-three, reconvening impasse hearing at backup. That concludes the revisions.
Thank you, Ms. Jackie. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda for today, November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, with the revisions as noted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we accept today's agenda with the revisions that we just read. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Ms. Jackie, I know we have a couple of special recognitions?
Yes, we do. I'd like to call Deborah Wright, Assistant Principal of Westwood Middle and representatives with the Pearls Institute, to step to the front for the auditori- at the auditorium at this time. Ms. Wright will provide information on the Pearls program and introduce several students who are participating.
Madam Chairman and school board and, and Ms. Byrd, I want to thank you for all the support that you've given Westwood Middle School and all of, all of the just love you guys have shown us. It takes a village to raise kids, and we have business partners, and we have community partners, and we have mentors. Um, one of our mentors is our Pearls group with Ms. Smith and Ms. Forte. Ms., um, Wright was very instrumental in getting that group with us. So I'm gonna let her come up and share a little bit about that group.
And before she comes forward, that's Mr. Todd Bennett, Principal of Westwood.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have the distinguished honor of having the Pearls here at Westwood Middle School, and they provide us with so much support to our students. As Mr. Bennett already said, it takes an entire village to do what we're able to do as educators. So partnering with outside organizations, Ms. Forte and Ms. Smith came aboard, and we're providing so many services to our girls in way of community service, outreach, self-esteem building. They have these beautiful shirts, pink, that we are wearing, and that honor what they're able to do. And like a pearl, it takes time for it to form it and for it to grow and develop into the wonderful opportunities that it does to glow for all of us. So Ms. Forte and Ms. Smith does a wonderful job of being with our girls every week after school to be able to provide them with that. So they're gonna tell you a little more about what it provides, but we appreciate Mr. Bennett's leadership and support in making this happen at Westwood.
Awesome. Good evening. My name is Angela Forte, and I serve as one of the community partners and facilitators for the Pearls Institute. I'm so glad to be a part of the Pearls Club at Westwood for the first time. I did just wanna share with you a little bit of information that'll help give you a background for why we do what we do. In a recent report by the CS- CNN reporter Jaclyn Howard, it was reported that young girls of color are seen as less innocent than their white counterparts. Now, this is not necessarily a black and a white issue, but there's a underlying socioeconomic issue that buys into this fact. The ideology that influences them is played out in school and in the community. We're still fighting the fight to say that we're just as equal as our male counterparts. It's called adultification. It lets some people believe that young girls of colors and those living below the poverty line don't need as much nurturing and as much loving as their counterparts do. However, what we do at Pearls is we address that. We help to improve their self-esteem by helping them identify the strengths that they have, improve the areas that need improving upon, and opening access for them to share those tools. Now, I'm not gonna get into a bunch of statistics and data, because obviously you guys are the professionals, and Mrs. Wright and Mr. Bennett could certainly do a far better job, but I do wanna share this with you. Our Pearls program, over the years, has served over two hundred girls between the ages of ten and nineteen. Ninety-five percent of our Pearls participants live in lower socioeconomic communities here in Polk County. Five percent of our Pearls participants come from two-parent households, only five percent. Sixty-five percent of our participants have a parent that is in prison or is a parent who is a repeat offender. Forty-five percent of our Pearls participants live with someone other than their biological parents. So just let that marinate for a minute. These are the kids that we work with on a daily basis. But despite these statistics, zero percent of our Pearls participants have dropped out of school. Two hundred young ladies have matriculated through high school. Zero percent have become pregnant as a teen. Ninety-five percent of our Pearls participants are drug and tobacco-free to date. One hundred percent of our participants have not only graduated high school, but matriculated to attend college, or I'm getting emotional, or post-secondary education. One hundred percent of our Pearls participants have been, have obtained gainful employment and maintain such to this date. This year's group, these young ladies represent our Westwood Club, are no different. The standard is set for them. We are all rallying behind them. We have some of our community partners in the audience. We call them our Friends of Pearls, because we truly know it takes a village to give a young child every opportunity that they need. I'm now gonna turn this over to our illustrious founder and visionary, Ms. Latonya C. Smith, and I'll pass you out some information that you can read.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here on tonight to share what our passion is with you.
Thank you.
Um, Mary Wolstencroft said, "Strengthen the female mind by enlarging it, and there will be an end to blind obedience." And so we have clearly proven with our statistical rates and data that clearly, that if you strengthen the female mind, you will end blind obedience. And one thing that Mary Wolstencroft did believe in, it wasn't so much about women being better than men, it wasn't so much about the men versus women battle, it was just we want to give them the tools to empower themselves to become successful. One of the greatest philosophers that I like is John Locke, and he says that when a child is born, that they're born with a tabula rasa, which means they are born with a blank slate. And it is our goal to help them to write and create on that blank slate. So we give them the potential, we give them the empowerment, we give them the access, we give them the respect that they need, we allow them to have the resource, the, the leadership, and success, and most of all, self-esteem, to do what it is that they do. And one of the greatest things that I've found, I know there may be some marathoners and runners in here on today, so there's a young lady, Shalane Flanagan, and over the weekend, new, uh, I think it's, uh, New York Times, they put out an article, and they called it the Shalane Flanagan Effect. And it deals with the capacity of when women come together in synergy of what they can do and what they can produce, because oftentimes, people aren't in agreement of gendering. We're not trying to, um, you know, change the status quo so per se, but we're giving them the opportunity to create their definition of what feminism is. And we're giving them the opportunity to decide how their feminism articulates, which is within the mainframe of society. So Shalane Flanagan, um, was able to run the marathon in two hours and twenty-six minutes. But she was, the only way she was able to do that is because she trained with eleven other women. And all of those women have also been, uh, Olympians as well, and they've taken home the bronze, and they've taken home the silver, and they've taken home the gold. So it is our goal, and it is our responsibility, it is our objective, and it is our duty to give them the capacity to run their race in a quicker time than Kay Fields did, in a quicker time than Jaclyn Byrd did, in a quicker time than Ms. Lori did, in a quicker time than Ms. Hazel did. And that's our responsibility, is just to create the pathways so they can do a quicker, better, more efficient, and more glorious than we could've ever done it. And that's Pearls. Why Pearls?
Awesome. You know, and what I would say, and the church said, amen. Yeah. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I just wanna ask a question. You have Pearls with little dots on there. Tell me what Pearls stands for.
Oh, man.
All right, one of the girl, yeah. Come to the microphone, though.
Come on, tell me what it means.
P stands for? Potential.
Okay.
E stands for en- empower.
Okay.
A stands for access. R stands for respect. L stands for leadership. S stands for success.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We wanna thank you on behalf of the school board for your hard work and for your passion. It is evident that you really, both of you women, believe in what you all are doing, and the impact that you are making on these young ladies' lives will be there forever.
Amazing.
So we wanna just thank you all. Hats off to you all. And young ladies, we're very proud of you all as well. Let's give them another hand, please. We're gonna get a picture? Y'all gonna come, come up, come front?
Oh, yeah.
Come down front?
Can I, can I say one thing real quick?
Yes.
Uh, this is one of my hobby horses that I talk about a lot. Uh, teen pregnancy in the United States of America is at its lowest point in recorded hi- hi- history, and going down. Um, a lot of people think that's the opposite for some reason. I think that's your adultification at work. Um, but it's the opposite of that. Uh, our, our young women are, are strong, and they're responsible, uh, and you're seeing in the world today that they're taking power in meaningful ways, and they're not gonna stand for some of the things they've had to stand for in the past. And, um, I'm really, really, really proud, proud of you guys, and, and just, just wanted to say congratulations for your pro- area, because you and lots of people like you, uh, and these excellent young women have helped drive that, that, that teen pregnancy rate down, and it's not gonna stop anytime soon. So thanks, good job.
And we thank you, that was, that was part of our, um, originally, that was why we started Pearls, because at the time, we were number three, um, for teen pregnancy when we started. So now, these girls, twelve years later, they deal with a whole different set of battles than what we dealt with. So that's why it's important for it really to become, um, for us to have campus community like at Westwood Middle School, and to not only be at Westwood, but to be at Jensen, to be at Stanford, and not only to be there, but to step up and be at the high school too. So, you know, here we go.
Congratulations to you all.
Act like you like each other. Let's give them another round of applause.
And just one thing, so we don't forget. Ms. Reynolds, being the district representative for the area, we do intend to send you an invitation for an event we're planning for late December, so hopefully you'll be able to grace us with your presence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, with Pauline Simmons Brown, Polk Vision's Community Engagement Coordinator, and the other Polk Vision representatives will come forward to recognize the efforts of the Polk Vision Attendance Team for Launching Strive for Less Than Five Days of Absent Campaign.
Hi, um, if we may, we have our annual report and some other materials we'd like to distribute. May we approach? Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kay, how are you?
I'm good.
Board members, superintendent. As always, we're pleased to be here, and that is, uh, it, I've never had to follow such an impassioned, uh, speech, so I'm a little awestruck by the Pearl program. Um, what, what I am awestruck by is not just the infectious enthusiasm, passion, and commitment, but the outcomes. The outcomes that they can boast, which is, uh, really remarkable. I think we have a program, this, a slideshow that's gonna be potted up here. Just wanna tell you how wonderful it is to be here before you again, to talk a little bit about the volunteers that are supporting passionately education initiatives through our Polk Vision programs. As you know, we have a number of lead teams that are, uh, working in the community, and a variety of them are focused on education. Today, we're gonna speak specifically about a program that's he- that has been instituted to combat, um, an attendance problem that we have. We have a serious, um, issue. We've inserted ourselves in a, at a grade school level, and not only at the direction and collaboration with the superintendent, but she was an active participant in the development of this campaign, and we wanna thank her for her leadership on that. So the Attendance Team, our overarching goal is to have a district-wide attendance improvement. As you know, Polk Vision always points to long-term outcomes. This strategic plan specifically is looking at the long-term outcome of improving our graduation rate through attendance. Our Polk Vision Attendance Team, a number of which are standing with me here, but I think we also have some folks in the gallery, is comprised of leaders from across the county, both engaged in education, but also supportive education initiatives. Their, a full roster of that is in front of you. But the strategy that we're talking about today is to create a sustainable culture of positive attendance within the district, not only involving the school, but the parents, families, and the community. What we're talking about is making people a little bit more uncomfortable about not getting their children to school, or being absent as a teacher or an administrator. We've asked them to stop out of their comfort zone and actually enact a culture change about attendance, because for every day missed, that's a day that you'll never make up. You're depriving yourself or your child of the ability or the right to a hundred and eighty days of school. We all know, they have the right to a hundred and eighty days of school. You can never make that up. So we're asking the five pilot schools to launch a multi-pronged tactical plan, and we've selected, um, in collaboration with the superintendent, five schools. It's a Strive for Less Than Five campaign, and you have some empirical information included there. The William DeVos Foundation actually did a study and a pilot in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and our, our team was inspired by the results of that Strive for Less Than Five. It's an actionable messaging campaign, obviously. Strive for less than five days absent. You take a pledge. You pledge, "I'm going to miss five or fewer days." And it also is an opportunity to high-five and give each other a signal that they're in. We're all in as a team. So, uh, right now, I'm going to, um, ask the booth to run a video message that the superintendent and Sheriff Grady Judd participated in making.
Good morning, Ms. Hume. How are you, sweetie? It's good to see you today.
Good to see you too.
Have a great day.
Have a great day today. I'm Jackie Byrd, Superintendent.
And I'm Grady Judd, Sheriff of Polk County.
We believe that students have unlimited potential to learn, succeed, and achieve in school.
Did you know that children have a right to a hundred and eighty school days every year? And just two absences a month is twenty a year. That's way too many. We need our children at school.
Twenty absences in a given school year puts students in danger of falling so far behind, they may never catch up.
And it doesn't matter if the days are back-to-back, far apart, excused, or unexcused. A missed day at school is a lost day at school in a child's life.
And a lost day is a lost opportunity.
Children who miss five or fewer days have a better chance at being successful in school.
And parents play such a big part in making that happen.
That is why we're launching the Strive for Less Than Five Challenge to all parents, students, and school staff. Step one, establish a routine by keeping a regular bedtime. Step two, prep clothes and backpacks the night before. Step three, only keep children home if they are truly sick. Step four, have a backup plan for getting to school. And step five, schedule appointments and trips around the school year.
We want every one of our children to achieve success in school. By following five steps, they can be successful, and it's important for the child's life. Strive for less than five.
As the credits roll, I just wanna let you know that I'm gonna turn this over now to co-chair of the Attendance Team, Janet Lamro. She's gonna get into a little bit more detail about what they're doing at a school level.
Thank you, Kim. Um, hopefully you heard what the sheriff said, excused or unexcused, anytime our children miss school, it is important. We did select the, uh, with superintendent selected the five pilot schools. Each of those individual schools are building their own Attendance Team. A lot of them are the staff members. Most of them are meeting weekly to discuss it. It was also important for them to engage the community, to pick a community partner, at least one, um, to start and have at least one parent or guardian involved with their team. And next slide, please.
Whoop, 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 whoop.
But of the pilot program, some of the three main goals, it's, it's very important to have the engagement piece, not only with the students, the parents, and the community. Each of these schools are unique. They're coming up with their own way to involve the students. Um, some of them will have, we've asked them all to have actionable items, at least one initiative. We have a slide in a minute, which you might've seen. A lot of them are doing attendance walls. We're doing a lot of involvement with the parent engagements, whether they're having a meeting at the beginning, beginning of the school, posting the video, putting videos on the website. Some of our schools, if you looked at Griffin, some of those, you'll see the, uh, principal, the administrator has a lead-in to Ms. Byrd and the sheriff's presentation. Next slide. Um, this is an example of one of the schools. That was Palmetto Elementary. They post their attendance records. We have different schools that will have attendance, attendance information, and the number of early checkouts, which is just as important. They have a big sign right there in the school office, so the parents have to walk by this big sign that's changed every day. Um, we have some schools that during their pilot program, they have a trophy that moves from classroom to classroom or grade to grade. Some of these schools are, um, counting the teachers' attendance in, in order to get the entire grade level attendance, just as a promotional, to get everyone involved with it. Um, we'll have a lot more stats for you later in the year. This is a, a program that's ongoing. We have, each one of those teams have one or two members of the Polk Vision team that, um, is trying to get engaged with their school to assist them, not, not to direct them, but, and help them if they need another community partner, or trying to get some parents or guardians involved.
Do you have any, do you have any questions?
I don't have, I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you all. I'm gonna thank you all for your, uh, dedication and commitment to the school district, and your focus on education, and the strategies that you're having in place, and wanna thank the community on behalf of the school board. I mean, we, we, we can't thank you all enough, and we know how committed you all are, and Ms. Janet, you, you've been faithful. Um, you really have.
She's a, she's a warrior.
Yes, ma'am. She is. Yes. I think there are other lights on as well. Uh, Mr. Townsend and then Ms. Sellers.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, uh, the, Ms. Gillespie, uh, to talk about the, the headlice containers that the program, and, and, and this is, you know, sometimes we are critical of parents and kids for, for not attending, but there are often reasons why they can't, and, and this is a, a pretty big driver of attendance. So can you talk a little bit about?
Sure. So we, I also wanna thank, I'm Shannon Gillespie, I'm the Senior Manager for Social Work Services, and my director, Jim Maxwell, is here in support of us as well. Billy also joined our, um, Strive for Less Than Five campaign, and, um, along with Hazel, and we, in this committee, we started to notice, well, one of the things that we've known for a very long time is that headlice has been an issue with our students, and our social workers, it's something that they face, um, on a daily basis, weekly basis, going on home visits for students who are out due to headlice. And so even though we, um, give them excuse days for the first five days, they're having a hard time getting back into school because they don't have the resources. So one of the things that we had kinda talked about in our team was, how could we combat this? So my department, we looked for a few grants, and we were able to get a, a small grant, and, um, recently, we're working on getting those, um, kits put together. And I don't remember who it was in our team, but we came up with the, um, the term healthy hair kits. And so each, um, student who is not able to provide that, um, headlice kit can take those home. Um, if the social worker's on a home visit, they can also have that with them when they go to the home. And it's just to help bring them back into school and break that barrier as the reason why that they can't be, um, back in as quick with the headlice.
And we almost had a really cool story about it, and then it's kinda fell through. We're go- we're gonna work, work on that. Now, but it's, it's an operational thing now, right? You've got it?
Yes.
We're going? Yeah. So we'll, we'll, a, a good thing for our, our, uh, PR folks to, to, to focus on.
Thank you for bringing that up, Billy.
Ms. Sellers?
I just wanted to, um, let everybody know how hard this committee has worked. They spent a year in, in getting research and understanding the issues and the reasons, and these people just put in tons and tons of hours. It might seem like an easy campaign to put together, but they did their homework. I just can't be more proud of a group that has really stuck. I believe this is the third year. It was, it was two years in planning and, and making sure to get it right, so thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Where is it being piloted? You said in five schools?
It's in the book.
Yes, ma'am. I think my slides are down, but, um, it's, it's in your book, right there, and it's Code, Code Academy, of course. That, that's what we call them now. It's Eagle Lake Elementary.
Yes.
Garner, Griffin, and Palmetto.
Thank you very much. I think the public needs to hear.
And we, we supplied them, um, while, while we know that each individual school, their community, their immediate community, will resonate and have different challenges, we did supply them with enough specific tools that we can actually measure outcomes, because if everybody was doing their own thing, it's not really a pilot. So, um, some of that was, uh, campaign materials, which include posters. We have handouts that were distributed, um, to the parents with calendars so they could, uh, with, put it on the refrigerator to track attendance. We also have, um, signs, and we've directed them to post attendance rates, um, at the, at the school, and engage everyone from the school crossing guard to the cafeteria personnel to make certain that everybody's on the same page about the importance of attendance. We're looking forward to being, being able to get back to you with some data. Irma put a delay to the start. Usually, we're here with you in September, talking about Attendance Awareness Month, which is classically September. Irma delayed our start, and then the ensuing makeup days that all the schools, so giving them a breather to get some traction. We hope to have some results for you by the end of the year with some improved attendance rates. May we have a picture? We would love that.
Sure, you can.
Yes, you can. And do the five with us? Would you, would you guys do the five with us?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I think they want to come down, right?
Yeah. However, you want to do it.
We stand up?
We'll just stand up.
Stand up behind you, and y'all be right there. Yeah, there we go. We can do this.
Jazz hands?
Which hands?
Jazz hands.
Jazz hands?
Both hands?
We'll do both or one?
You guys come together in blue.
Huh? That's 10 instead of five? I can't add. Oh, we got to scoot in.
I feel like we're about to.
Yeah, heal somebody.
Or we're, we're, we're going to burn somebody's brains with fire.
Thank you, everyone. And this concludes our announcements for this afternoon. Yeah, I saw it. I was trying to get them to publicly say it. Thank you.
And now, this is the time that we will entertain any speakers that would like to have comments on anything that is on today's agenda. And I have one person who signed up, and that's Reverend James Hall. Reverend Hall, if you can come up and give us your name, and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Reverend James Hall. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Superintendent. I'm coming before you today to speak in behalf of the charter that was given to you guys for Our Children's of Winter Haven. My daughter started there three years ago as a nonverbal autistic child with other underlying needs, and now is thriving in the fifth grade. I just want to let you know that the former founder is no longer with the school. I know that the board had issues with the budget. They had issues with recommendations. And they had issues with the former owner and director of the school. She has retired. She is no longer part of the school. We are moving in a new direction under great leadership with Dr. Callens. We have a wonderful staff, therapists. My daughter could not get the help that she needs in the public school. We have 300 students, almost. You have no place to put them. Our format is based upon the same school that she started in Lake Wells. It was her concept. It's thrived. She's not there, it's thrived. She's not with us. We're going to thrive. That doesn't mean that she wasn't a good person. That doesn't mean anything bad. It just means that we're taking our children in a direction. We need the charter. The charter was well-written, written, excuse me, by a professional. That was one of your concerns. I've read the charter. I agree with the charter. I agree with the school. And I'm asking Madam Superintendent, that you and the board please consider to pass this charter. I know there's people that are on the committee for the charter system that had big issues with the former director and owner of the facility. And I can promise you with a shadow of a doubt, if I thought my child was not getting the help, the resources, the development, the skills, and the compassion that she deserves, my child would not attend that school. But I can tell you this. I've researched Polk County schools. She was in it for the first three years. And I can tell you this. Not one school in Polk County can meet my daughter's needs the way that Our Children of Winter Haven can. And I ask that you please consider reaching your hearts, your minds, and really think about these children with the special needs. Think about what their parents go through every day, what they go through every day, and to put them back into the mainstream. We can't do that. We cannot lose them. These are our.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Okay, the next person is Dr. Tandrea Callens.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Tandrea Callens, and I represent Our Children's Prep School. According to the Florida Statute 1002.336B, clerical or other minor edits are not a basis for denial, provided the applicant timely corrects the mistakes. Before approving or denying any application, the sponsor shall allow the applicant, upon receipt of written notification, at least seven calendar days to make technical or non-substantiative corrections and clarifications. I received the written notice on October 16th and submitted my points of clarification on October 23rd. I was informed that my points of clarification would not be viewed by the school board members. If given the opportunity, as indicated by charter law, I would like to share these points of clarification with you. After reviewing these edits, you would agree that the uncertainties and questions shared, raised by the charter review team will be clarified, and approval of Our Children's Prep School would be warranted. The application evaluation has a number of open-ended questions and suppositions regarding the law and the district's authority that are incorrect. For obvious reasons, those are not valid grounds for denial. There are a number of arguably de minimis errors in the application review that rise above the level of purely clerical error, but arguably do not rise to the level of good cause or materiality required to constitute a ground for denial. Repeated concerns over governance and financial management and oversight. To reduce the concern of commingling of funds between the public school and private, the private school will be relocated and will not coexist with the public charter school. Additionally, to eliminate the repeated concern of Our Children's Rehab Center as an ESP, the HR and billing employees will work directly for the charter school. This will eliminate the need for back-office support staff. The cost of these professional and technical services are already represented in the budget in line item 7500-310. It can be moved to a direct expense rather than a contracted expense. The only contracted services will be those of the therapy staff through Our Children's Rehab Center. On behalf of the 260 students and families we serve and the 80 staff members, I would like to thank the Director of Charter Schools, Melissa Brady, the Superintendent, Ms. Jacqueline Byrd, the Charter Review Team, and the school board members for your time and reconsideration of approval of our charter school application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callens. Jessica Ingles.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jessica Ingles. I am a Coda. I work with occupational therapy at Our Children's. I'm here to express the aspect of therapy within our school. I know that you guys are not fully aware of how we kind of function. I do want to start by saying that I'm excited for our new leadership, and I'm confident that the school has been left in more than capable hands of Dr. Tandrea Callens. I'm confident that our new leadership will provide, will prove to be beneficial for the children, for the staff, and for our community. As a therapist within the school, I get to see firsthand the achievements and the gains that are possible due to ongoing therapy. We, as a team, we all feel so very lucky to be able to be a part of this experience, and we're so proud of the hard work and the play that our children do put into this. Within the school, we have several speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical and behavioral therapists, and we have specific classes that we are assigned to. That being said, we see our students every day, regardless if we're treating that student on that particular day or not. We are there on a daily basis. We're able to make corrections. We're able to make adjustments. If our therapy doesn't go well the first day, and we're not treating that child the second day, we can see them again and say, okay, this is the way that we can do this. We can make those adjustments. We work together. We see those children every day. All of our disciplines work together. We're all very cohesive. We work along with the teacher to help ensure that the students' success and that have carryover on acquired skills. We're always aware of what each child is working on, and we can incorporate different skill sets to ensure their success. We are an extension of the classroom instruction with a hands-on environment. Doing so gives the students an opportunity to receive their education with the visual, tactile, auditory, and sensory stimulations that they may require. In regular schools, therapists mainly come in once or twice a week, 30 minutes at a time. They pull out the student into a small room, but they provide therapy on an educational model. When the time is up, so is the therapy. There's no follow-through. There's no corrections. And it will take longer to achieve the goals in this manner. Plus, the child will lose valuable class time. Our therapies are educationally based, but more than that, they are life-skill-based. Our children will learn to promote skills that will promote independence in living, to function in our community, in our society. Life skills should never be taken for granted. It comes so naturally for us, but it can be a constant struggle for people with disabilities. Another benefit for our, for our therapy falls to the parents. Our parents are able to see us, and they're able to express their concerns and their enthusiasm for their child's progress. In most schools, parents only see their child's therapist during the once-a-year IEP meeting. And the child's progress is discussed, new goals are set, and that's it. The therapists at Our Children's of Winter Haven are quite accessible, and we're more than happy to speak to our parents at any given time. As it says before, "It takes a village to raise a child." We are blessed to be part of that program. Our students deserve the best, the best education, the best therapies, the best hands-on opportunities. And we ask for your support because our children deserve nothing less than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Fleming, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Whitney Fleming, and I am here to speak on behalf of Our Children's of Winter Haven, along with Dr. Callens and Jessica, and the rest of our wonderful team. I just kind of wanted to touch on what Jessica said, on our unique collaboration of our therapeutic and educational model. As a speech therapist at the school, I get to work with these children who I'm working on educational goals with, but also their therapy goals in the classroom. I also get to extend my knowledge from the therapy background with the educators I'm working with. I have experienced such really cool transitions throughout the years with these teachers that I work with, where I walk into a classroom, and it's no longer just a speech therapist's job to teach the L-sound to a child, but the teacher is having, is emphasizing it in his lesson. That's amazing. With, when I was contracted to a regular education school where I pulled my students out for therapy, I didn't get that collaboration with those teachers. I didn't get, you know, I told them what I was working on, but they didn't get to see, this is how we pronounce these sounds. This is how I ask these questions to further the development of these children's goals. Working in the classroom setting, along with not only the teachers, but the other therapists, the physical therapist, the occupational therapist, just gives our children that much more of a step-up to learn and be able to achieve their goals in a faster manner. So I just would like to, you know, put in my, sorry, I'm getting very nervous. I'm just here to let you guys know. I've been with this company, with this school for a long time, and the model that we have is exceptional. There's no other, I've never seen another one like it. And I don't think that the, the students' achievement, these beautiful children, they need this, and I don't think that they can get it anywhere else. So I want to thank you guys for your time, and thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Linda Malone.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I am an occupational therapist like Jessica, and I wanted to share why I'm at Our Children's of Winter Haven. I joke about being old. I'm 60 now, and I have looked for a school like this all my life and didn't know. I teach, I mean, I am an OT and a part-time teacher in the supportive participatory middle and high school room. These are children who need to learn life skills, and they are very exciting, and I'm so thrilled to be there. And I want to tell you how and why. 20 years ago, as a teacher, I was getting many children in the class all of a sudden, very strange behaviors. I got along with them. Their behaviors sometimes were a little violent. And at that time, we didn't really know that much about autism or the autism spectrum, as we're now referring to it. But I got along with these children. I got to know them. But it wasn't really, I didn't have the tools to work with them. So I discovered occupational therapy. I went back to school here at Polk and learned as much as I could. Was very, very excited about it. Came out, looked around for a school, saw some schools, visited. They did the 30-minute thing. I'm, I think it's wonderful that they're doing it. But when I found Our Children's of Winter Haven, it was like, oh, wow. I can do what I really want to. An example of that is I work on teaching, training, and life skills, like I said earlier. Many of my students are currently learning to fill out a job application with neat legible and small writing. If you could meet these children, they like to write big. Not itty-bitty. They don't, and they don't want to take the time. I had worked and worked, and I finally went and got a McDonald's application. I said, okay, we're going to do this. And I made them try and fill it out. The little itty-bitty were, it was horrible. They didn't like it. So we went back to working, and now we're working on the itty-bitty McDonald's thing. They're writing their names small, normal size for the rest of us. I get to do this with them because I'm there every day, and I can figure out how to get them there, how to improve handwriting. You can't do that for 30 minutes once a week. That's just one example. I just love being there. And I, I want to stay, and I want them to have everything they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara Gouge.
Good evening. I'm Tara Gouge. I'm a teacher at Our Children's of Winter Haven as well, supporting our school and our team. I want to tell you why the therapeutic model works, the cooperative therapeutic educational model. I had a child, and the story of this child from the parent when he was born, he couldn't nurse. He would scream, 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 couldn't figure it out, barely wanted to take a bottle, finally took bottles, progressed on a little bit, didn't really learn to crawl till about nine months, didn't really want to walk till about a year and a half, didn't do the normal pointing, the normal things that kids did. Really had no words, never said mama, never said dada, hated sippy cups. They finally got him to eat some pureed foods, but that was it. It was probably almost two years old before he would even eat any solids. And those solids were just a core thing. The parents were really frustrated. The child, by two years old, was throwing things like computers, small TVs if he could do it. He had no words. It was the only way he could communicate. They showed up very frustrated to the original Our Children's. And that therapeutic model began to work on this child. They enrolled this child, and at two and a half, still with only 20 or 30 words, not potty-trained, not knowing how to dress himself. The parents began to see the therapeutic model in work. If an OT or a speech therapist were teaching about clothing, the teacher would teach the color of the clothing. If they were teaching him how to eat different foods, then the teacher was teaching him about the food groups. So fast forward, they went through all of this. This child now is 11 years old, can read on sixth, seventh grade level, reads medical books, wants to be a doctor, and it's actually my son. So the therapeutic model actually inspired me to become a teacher with them. And I can't tell you, if that was your child, wouldn't you want the best for your child instead of sticking them in a classroom where they might get some help, but they're not going to have the everyday therapy? They're not going to have the everyday co- They're not going to have the everyday cohesive, cooperative lessons? They're not going to have the therapist's numbers at night when they're really frustrated to call? And I went through that, and I, you know, what Dr. Reverend Hall said is true. It doesn't matter who started it, but the model works. And, you know, we had a prayer at the beginning. It's really about the children. And if we're all God's children, I don't care who started it, but I know it works. And that needs to come to light as a charter so we can reach more and more children. I work there now, I'm passionate about that. I taught his daughter last year, and I just, you know, I want to pass that on. So, that's all I can do, is share my heart and say, "Please do this for us." You know, I know it would open the doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Gomez.
Good evening. My name is Graciela Gomez, otherwise known as Ms. Grace, and I have been employed with Our Children's Rehab Clinic to service Our Children's of Winter Haven and formerly Our Children's Academy in Lake Wales. Well, today I can say that Our Children's of Winter Haven is my second home. Here, I've been able to form a lifelong connection with teachers, therapists, paraprofessionals, and behavioral support staff members. Here at Our Children's of Winter Haven, I've stepped out of my comfort zone and have truly become the bilingual speech therapist I want and care to be. Throughout my years, I have provided a wide variety of children with special needs. Here at Our Children's of Winter Haven, we are unique because we carry not only an educational model, but an educational and therapeutic model, allowing them to reach their maximum potential. Within, most important, an inclusionary setting, we are able to scaffold and increase their comprehension abilities. We're able to enhance and combine. The school intertwines not only education and therapy, but a unique therapeutic and behavioral model as well. I have been trained in a positive, with positive and behavioral techniques that not only build our children, but staff members as well. We build student confidence levels, reduce stressful moments or anxiety to effectively deal with student or special needs. The amount of transition that takes place towards good instruction, collaboration, is evident by many levels when working with children with special needs. I have a little short example, it's a little minor one, but here is, it's very basic and very, so it's a visual aid, and it's modeling academic tasks. It's a very simple activity. So, as I draw a face, I tell the children, "I'm drawing eyes. I'm drawing a mouth. These are teeth." So, basically, the visual references make comprehension quicker and easier, and the modeling of language enables children to learn in a more grammatical structure. I have the opportunity, as a bilingual speech therapist, to work collaboratively to address the needs of our students. Here, I've been able to shift away from the traditional therapy or teaching student. It's confusing, right? What I really mean is I'm able to push English language learners towards more of a language proficiency as well as an overall academic growth. I have a clear sense of their own ethnic and cultural identity. I believe all students can succeed because our instruction also focuses on student creation of meaning about academic content in an interactive and collaborative learning environment. True scaffolding that links the ones that are challenged academically within our curriculum happens here. We embrace the use of cultural resources our own students bring to our school. We are able to meet the needs of our English language learners and other diverse learners. I'm able to meet the special educational need of our children working to learn English in students with disabilities. I'm able to easily collaborate with teachers and revise their current lesson plan and link them to ensure I'm able to address the English skills students need to learn in their academic content. Our staff shows students we care, we love them by getting to know their individual needs and strengths while sharing their concerns, hopes, and dreams. We do our best to understand students' home cultures to better comprehend their behavior in and out of the classroom. I'm committed to continue staying with this school because of the unique way I'm being utilized as a bilingual speech therapist. I will continue to fill that gap for our English language learners and our diverse learners and continue to embrace our educational therapeutic and behavioral model. If anything, our children deserve this charter. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Candace Ducking.
Hi, my name is Candace Ducking. I'm currently at Our Children's of Winter Haven. Most of my work experience has been with the school board. The last two years I've been at Lake Shub as a guidance counselor, so I have been working with the students that we mainly serve at Our Children's, a lot one-on-one when I was at the school board. I just wanted to get our parents to be in regards for a parent and read a parent letter that was emailed to us. It says, "My name is Amanda Gaddin. Our son, Andrew Gaddin, is new to this school, and is new to this school this year. I want very much to attend this meeting, but due to my own medical situation, I requested my email be read by one of the faculty. Andrew has completely flourished under the staff, teachers, para, and nursing. None social and artistic. He's become a social and even participated in Special Olympics." Also, I'm not off her email. "I attended an event this weekend with our students, at a Special Olympic event, and I just want to say that our PEW team is number one in the state of Florida." So, it's flat football. I just wanted to say that. Now I lost my spot in my email, so. Okay. "He's becoming social and even participated in Special Olympics. Medically, they have observed, he has been observed and reacted with haste. I couldn't think of a better school than Our Children's of Winter Haven. This school and our students deserve and are in need of funding and programs that in my heart know will enhance our son's life tremendously. If our school has the access and ability to apply the charter, support our children at our school and of course mine will exceed even farther. I know our son will have anything and everything possible for his future if our school was given the opportunity of being a part of the charter school community. Please, from the bottom of my heart, assist this wonderful school with the tools and funding they need. For the first time in our son's thirteen years, he's exceeding. Please help this amazing team, help him have a real future." So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Millhorn.
Good evening. Larry Millhorn, President asked me. Tonight, you're going to vote on our contract, and I want to thank the superintendent and her negotiating team for finally coming back to the table and getting us a contract. I said all the time, I didn't know why we were at impasse. I always said that we could talk and work it out, and I want to thank them for coming to the table and working with us. We finally got a contract. It's been a while working on it, but I knew all the time that it's not a hundred percent that we're happy, it's not a hundred percent the district's happy. But we talked it out and we worked it out. And I want to thank my team and the school board's team for having at Stanma to come back to the table and do that. We're getting ready to go into negotiations again. I know, I don't like the word impasse, and I hope that don't happen again this year. I hope we can stay at the table and talk everything out. But I do urge you to approve the contract tonight. Like I said, we were, my people overwhelmingly voted to ratify these contracts. Not everybody, you know, agreed. We did have some no votes, but very few on each one of the contracts. But they are, they wish they had more, but they are happy with what they got. It's a lot better than what we started with. And I do want to thank the superintendent and her team for coming back to the table and working with us. And I hope we have the same kind of negotiations this year and not go to impasse and just sit at the table until we can work out our differences. And I want to thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Perk.
Thank you. Sarah Fortney.
Sarah Fortney, proud science teacher at Stanball Middle School. After attending today's work session, I'm sure the pares, teachers, and secretaries would love for the board to show us the same respect, value, and courtesy that was expressed by a couple of board members for your attorney and certain principals. Familiarity breeds contempt. What does that noun mean? The feeling that a person or thing is beneath consideration, worthless, or deserving scorn. Disregard for something that should be taken into account. Synonyms include scorn, disdain, disrespect, disregard. This is why your pares and secretaries and teachers have the lowest morale I've seen in my thirty-three-plus years. Update, you might recall the math teacher that three of our Stanball Middle School students spoke in support of that was involuntarily displaced because of a fraudulent VAM score. Her position, for your information, was finally filled after three weeks of subs. Her last day was this past Thursday. Your actions are breeding contempt, not positive relationships. That's all.
Thank you. Joellen Stranger.
Good evening. My name is Joellen Stranger. I'm a teacher at Crystal Lake Middle School, and I'm also a parent and a community member. I'm really saddened that we have to be back in this position after an extensive impasse hearing. I was going to make some remarks about the impasse hearing, but unfortunately, it wasn't posted on the school board website, and so I couldn't go and look at anything. So, I'm just going to talk a couple of points that I remembered from my notes. First off, I want to remind you that the budget that we're considering, the collective bargaining agreement that we're considering is for the 2016-2017 school year. If this had been decided in 2016-2017, we wouldn't be talking about Hurricane Irma impact or anything else that has happened since when we should have already had this contract in place. I realize that we need to consider this, but when you have, I think Mr. Harris told us at the impasse meeting that eighty-three percent of our budget is our personnel, that should be what you consider first. And you might need to consider upping that to being, say, eighty-five percent of your budget. And then, deal with what needs, what's left over to fund other projects. You were threatening us with layoffs if we increase our salary. Yet, if your goal is to provide the best for students, then you need to be considering your class-size amendment because we have numerous classes in this county that are way over what the voters decided they wanted our class sizes to be. You're chipping away at our respect. You are beginning to make us feel not so appreciated. It's little by little, but it builds up. The special magistrate, who is a renowned employee relations expert, gave you his recommendations, and the first representation that we had from the district in the newspaper was that it was a non-binding agreement or a non-binding ruling. That spoke volumes to how you feel about us. I think at this time, we need to be pulling together and working together to change education at the state level. And if you want us to do that, then you need to tell us how to do it. Work with us so that we can pull together and change things at the state level. But you're not going to get us to help you out if you don't show us some type of respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler.
Victor Chandler, Eagle Lake. I understand that you are contemplating giving no raise and then a two percent raise. Now, what does that really mean? Does that mean that you would increase the salary schedule of teachers two percent more than it was two years ago? No. In fact, there's a good chance it wouldn't increase at all. Would it mean that you would increase the average teacher's salary by two percent more than it was two years ago? No? Actually, it may decrease it. Would it mean that you would increase spending when you eliminate hiring more teachers, the cost of hiring more teachers, than two years ago? No. In fact, all three might decrease. What your problem is, is you're using a system that was devised when teachers did not negotiate a contract. And when they became eligible to negotiate a contract, you continued to use a system that was devised when teachers signed individual contracts, and there was no negotiations. Now, that leads to a big problem because you've had in the past, an individual say that if you give teachers a two percent raise the way you calculate theirs, you should give us a two percent raise. You do that, and that's more than just unethical, anybody who tells you they're the same. It goes far beyond that. I know of no union in the United States that negotiates for a group of individuals a contract in which they don't negotiate an increase in the contract, an increase in spending, and an increase in the average salary of those employees. I'm asking you to do something that needed to be changed whenever you switched over from individual contracts to negotiated contract. It would better inform the public. It would eliminate the possibility that someone came to you, and I hope that didn't occur. I hope no one has told you, "Oh, well, you know, if you gave teachers a two percent raise, give us one." Because if you gave, say, senior management a two percent raise, you would increase every number on their salary schedule by two percent, while you would leave essentially the salary schedule of teachers the same as it was two years ago. It's time for a change. You know? I'm asking you to use what every corporation that I know of, I have MBA, in the United States uses when they negotiate with unions, an increase in that contract from the.
Okay, the last person I have is Kayla Tetter, I believe.
Hello. My name is Kayla Tetter, and I'm a student at George Jenkins High School. I'm actually a senior this year. And I like to consider myself fairly civically engaged. So, a problem comes when board meetings and... So, a problem comes when board meetings and work sessions are scheduled at 9:00 a.m., because like the whole attendance promotion, I would like to be able to attend school, but also come here, if that makes sense. So I'm here because, well, the work session started at 2:30, so I raced from George Jenkins to here to make it on time, and I hate being late. So I would appreciate it if something could be worked out so that both parents, students, and teachers would be able to attend more of these meetings, because I'm sure many of my fellow classmates, many of my own teachers, and many parents in the community would appreciate being able to attend something that affects all of our lives so much and has such an impact on this community without having to take days off of work, without having to call in personal days for teachers, and without having to miss any more school than I already do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have a...
Yes?
I'm advised that we have an agreement between the parties in the, in the negotiations between PEA and the district. That being the case, there will be no, no cause or need to hold the, the continuance of the impasse hearing tonight. And what that means is that the, the agreement will, will go to the public employees for ratification and then be presented to the school board. But the, the public hearing that was continued from Monday a week ago will, will not proceed this evening. Impasse is at an end.
Well, we're happy to hear that. It would have been nice that we heard it at the beginning of the meeting, but thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, I'm just saying.
I received that at 6:09.
Yes. But thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is approving the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We're approving minutes for October the 10th, 2017 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we approve the minutes for the October the 10th, 2017 work session. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next set of minutes would be October the 24th, 2017, school board meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we approve the minutes for the October the 24th, 2017 school board meeting. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item would be approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we approve the consent agenda for today's meeting. And we're making, are we needing to make any revisions, Mr. Bridges, since we are not going to have to do the impasse, or are we okay?
Any revisions to...
Okay, so we should be fine?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I believe so. There, yeah, there's, there's no, no need to have the public hearing now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda for today's meeting, and there's no discussion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Ms. Jackie, I know we have one new administrator.
Yes, we do.
I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Billy D. Washington as Assistant Principal of McLaughlin Middle School. Mr. Washington previously, previously served as the Dean of Students at Donnie Woods Opportunity Center. He attended the Virginia, Virginia Military Institute, earning a bachelor's degree in biology. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome, Mr. Washington. Is he in the audience tonight? There he is.
Good evening.
To the school board members, Ms. Jackie Bird, to my family and friends that are here today, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to serve the community that I grew up in. I went to McLaughlin as a student. I went to Lake West High School, so it's, I'm passionate about going home and making a difference in that community. I want to thank Mr. Bellamy and the Don E. Woods family for the past five years. I want to thank Ms. Driscoll for giving me the opportunity to come back home and make a difference in the communities that I grew up in. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. That concludes our new administrator announcements.
Thank you. And the next item is on the regular agenda, and it is to approve the ASME 2016-2017 collective bargaining agreement changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we approve the ASME 2016-2017 collective bargaining agreement changes. Is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for charter applications received August the 1st, 2017, and each of these will need a separate vote.
Mm-hmm. Can you talk about it?
So, Ms. Jackie, are you going to have a staff person to, to present each of these?
Ms. Brady?
Reviewed the application for Navigator Academy. It was recommended to the superintendent to approve. It was recommended to the superintendent to approve.
Are you going to explain each one?
Oh, I, I didn't realize that's what you wanted me to do, I'm sorry. Navigator Academy comes to us, it brings forward a STEM program. The beginning of the program, the first year of opening, sorry, I wasn't expecting that. They, okay, sorry, Navigator Academy is proposing to open a K-6 in year one with 678 students. It will serve students in a STEM-type of program, and it will eventually grow into a K-8. They are looking at the area of Davenport to open their school.
And the recommendation is?
Recommendation is approval.
Move approval of the charter application for Navigator Academy of Leadership.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we approve the charter application for the Navigator Academy of Leadership. Is there any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Couple of things. I'm going to vote against this. It's, it's, it's the closest call of the three to me. The, it's a six-five, I, I think that was, that was the, the committee, right? Very, very evenly divided.
That's correct.
I think, one thing's I wanted to, to compliment the applicants on is the, the inclusion of, of ESE kids. I, I think, I, I appreciate that. I, I think you've made an effort there. Unfortunately, we're in a very unsettled time in our relationship with charters in the state and with, and I, I don't feel comfortable voting today, and there's no other time to do it. You may very well be able to overturn this and come right back and do it, but I, I think there is enough here, both in the overall climate and the uncertainties that come with the overall climate, and a couple of things with the application that make, make me a little uncomfortable, but it's a, but it's a close call for me, but, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead and vote against, against it. I just wanted to explain that to you.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? I would just add that when this application was initially brought with discussion, I believe this was the one that was to be in South Lakeland. Is that correct, Ms. Jackie?
No.
Never? Okay, all right. Okay, so just scratch that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to approve the charter application for the Navigator Academy of Leadership. All those in support of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have two nays and five yeses, so the motion is carried.
The next application that was brought forward was from Our Children's Academy, and this evening you heard many of the employees of Our Children's Academy speak. The school was brought forward with a new director, Dr. Candrea Talan, Dr. Tandrea Callens, I apologize for that. The former director has now resigned from the organization. The application was reviewed and was denied by the review charter team. It was recommended to the superintendent to deny the application.
That's my recommendation.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to deny the Our Children's Prep School charter proposal.
Second.
It's been moved, and second, that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation to deny the Our Children's Prep School charter application. Is there any discussion? I'll start with Mr. Harris.
Ms. Brady, could you share with us a little bit about what we have heard tonight from the people at the school and in the community, and those changes, if any, that that makes on the application itself? Is there not some type of cutoff point at which changes can be made? And if so, does that also give them the opportunity to reapply at the next round?
To answer your question, and first, let me just ask you to clarify, are you referring to the, what Dr. Callens was referring to about submitting additional responses?
Correct.
Those responses were not considered non-significant. They were considered quite substantive, and so the law doesn't permit those to be entered after the application has already been submitted, so we could not submit those. As far as where the school is going and the, and the application itself, of course, the charter review team takes great pride in reviewing it and scrutinizing it with a fine-toothed comb. They do have every right to resubmit the application February 1 with the additional changes that we requested.
From what I have heard among my colleagues and people in the community, there has been strong support for this type of charter school. I, for one, have advocated that charters have an even playing field with the schools, but also that charters offer something unique and different. I believe that we have exhibited as a school district and as a board that we're in favor of that. We have voted the previous charter to exist, and I think if there is a strong application from this group, that it would probably receive approval again from this group.
Yes, sir.
From this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Reynolds?
I was going to ask the same question Tim did for clarification, but I just want to say thank you to all of you who came out to speak. We really do appreciate what you are doing for these kids. Reading through the application, it was a lot of the budgetary concerns that that co-mingling of funds gets very slippery slope very quickly. It sounds like you have come up with a plan to combat that, and I would look forward to reading another application from you all next year. So thank you for all that you've done.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I concur with that. I, I think we have a, a very clear need for what you're providing in our community. I also believe there needs to be a clear divestiture, if you will, and, and, and I think that we'll see that in the next application, and I look forward to, to approving it when it's, when it, when all of that is cleared up.
Ms. Sellers?
I have much the same comments. I've visited the school several times. I see the good work. This is very difficult, but we want you to succeed. You're succeeding as a private school. We want you to be able to succeed as a charter school. These are the kinds of charter schools that, that we do need, but there were too many holes in this current, and February 1st is the deadline, so it, that comes very fast, because I, I agree with all of our colleagues. We really are cheering you on. It's just that if you're going to be a charter, you need to be a successful charter, and we've had an ESE charter have to close because of budgetary situations, and it was very painful for both the parents and the students. So I hope we're encouraging you just get that charter application and especially the budget right. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too feel that Our Children's Academy, when I knew it in the days of Lake Wales, serves a very unique purpose, as does Our Children's Prep in Winter Haven. As each of you has stated tonight, it's a very special group of children that we service, and we're very grateful and blessed that you are in our community doing just that. I just want to make it clear, though, that with us, if, if we do not approve this charter, that these students will still have a place to go, because you are an op, you are a for-profit business. Am I correct? You are not going to go away. I don't want the public to think that if the charter is not approved tonight, that those children won't have a place to go to school, because they will continue to go to school and be served as Our Children's Prep Academy. What we ask you to do is exactly what my colleagues have said, is to go back and clean up your application so that we can, with all good conscience, approve the finances and all the other things. I've been on the board a long time, and it's very rare that a charter review committee comes back 11 to 0 to deny an application. I got to tell you, it made all of us look twice. That's a very rarity. So, we believe in you, we believe in the mission, we believe in all the folks who took the time tonight. We're just asking you to allow us to do our job by submitting an application appropriately and making sure, work with our team. You have the option to do that. Our team asks you guys if you want to come in and look over and work together to make sure that that application meets all of state statute and standards. And then I don't think we'll have a problem going forward, and we look forward to your application next year. But because of what all that has been presented to us, where I personally am going to have to deny, going to have to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, as my motion stated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And what I would say to Ms. Callens and your team, I stated this at the last work session, we value what you all do. We know that your work is very important to our community, but more than anything to the kids that you serve. We know that you all work hard, and we just encourage you to go back and fine-tune your application. And as Ms. Cunningham said, work with our staff and come back next year. And I am confident that if you work with our, our staff and fine-tune that application, that everything will work out for your good, but more than anything, for the good of the students. So with that said, the motion on the floor is to deny Our Children's Prep School charter application. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The last application that was brought forward this year was for Bach Academy North. It was a replication of Bach Academy in Lake Wales. It was going to open to serve 200 students, 200 sixth graders in their first year until their building was built in the years prior. It was denied based on material deficiencies that exceeded what we felt could, we could approve for a high, high-performing replication.
This is my recommendation.
Move approval?
Second.
Sorry, move approval of her recommendation, yes.
It's been moved, and second, that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation
to deny the charter application for the Edward W. Bach Academy North charter application. I'm sure there's discussion. Mr. Townsend?
I, I can't support this for the same, same reason that I couldn't support the, the arrangement with McLaughlin, even though I think there is a comprehensive settlement agreement, partnership to be made with Lake Wales as a whole, you know, up through the, 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 the high school there. We just have to, we have to do some work on it. And to me, the biggest problem continues to be the, the, the enrollment policies. I mean, the, I, the, the fact that they have to still have the target one, target two issue, and, and no one seems to be, they seem to think that's entirely a legal thing. We seem to think it's not, not, not legal, and frankly, in, in charter law, I'm not sure that the word "legal" has any meaning anymore. Like, it's, it's, it's all determined on who enforces what and how. I'm sure they're going to go up to Tallahassee- I'm sure they're gonna go up to Tallahassee and come, come back on this. I, it's, it's unfortunate because, you know, I, I, I'm gonna vote against this for a lot of the same, same reasons that I voted against our most, most recent ma- Agnes School programs as well. I mean, we've done too much of the intentional or unintentional se- seg- segregating. I mean, it remains a fact that Lake Wales has an elementary school that we're, we're about to deal, deal with that's thirty, thirty, thirty percent white, and they're asking for rep- replication of their middle school that's sixty percent white. Um, and the, you know, our middle school is, is, has all of Lake Wales ESE kids. Um, that's a, a, a problem, and it's a problem for Lake Wales. It's a problem for that community much more than it, than it is for anybody, anybody else. I want to be helpful in solving that, but the, the basis for that remains setting some rules about how kids get in, about, about how kids are, are enrolled, how kids are kept. And I'm open to deal with that anytime, any, anybody wants to sit down and talk. I think we're sort of at an impasse with them right now. I'm at, and I, I think the way we've dealt with the impasse here would be something of a model for dealing with, with them. I'd, I'd love to have a big bloody meeting with them where, where, where we all got up and yelled at each other, and they, they, they said, "We're awful." They said, "We said whatever" to them, and then we got down to talk about how we could actually come up with a solution that would work for ev- everybody. But, but, but Bach North as it stands does not appear to be that solution to me, and, uh, that's why I'm gonna vote against it.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, myself, uh, living in the Lake Wales community, um, when I received this application, I'll be quite honest, I was disheartened. Because I know the great work that Bach Academy currently does in our community for a lot of our students. So, um, I wanted to dispel some myths, which were that, uh, uh, that the school board just doesn't give a darn about charter schools, at least that's what was in the paper, by their chair, and that is so not true. What actually happened for those who have not read the Bach North proposal is the very first Bach Academy proposal was utilized and simply cut and pasted. And the new rules, the new regulations, the new statutes, the new information that needed to be provided in that application simply were not there. And I'm gonna give a few examples so that those listening might have an idea why this in- individual board member cannot support Bach North's application. Okay, so, it says, "The educational program design stipulates that it would be premature to lock this proposed school into a program without seeking the opinions of the teachers who will be delivering the reading curriculum. If you already have a highly effective school, then you should already know what your reading program is going to be. Additionally, in the curriculum plan, it states it provides minimal information regarding the proposed reading instruction. Once again, if we have a high-performing school that we're trying to replicate, I would think that information would already be in that application. Additionally, under student performance, the, um, application fails to include educational measurable objectives for any subgroups. Therefore, it is unclear as to how the school will measure overall effectiveness for exceptional education students as suggested. Once again, if you're a high-performing school, you should be able to tell us how you're going to measure those objectives. Additionally, for English language learners, fails to provide information regarding the procedures that will be utilized for identifying English learning, English language learners. Fails to provide plans for monitoring and evaluating the progress and success of our ELL students. Additionally, um, fails to provide information regarding any extra and co-curricular activities or programs the school will offer, and how such activities will be funded. Once again, if we're replicating current Bach Academy, which offers football, cheer, cross-country basketball, volleyball, soccer, golf, tennis, track and field, it's kinda interesting that they couldn't state in there what extracurricular activities were gonna be provided at Bach North. Management and staffing fails to provide a staffing plan for each year of the charter term that includes all anticipated pers- personnel and align to the school's projected enrollment. Okay, I could go on and on, there's about ten more pages, and I won't do that. But the point is, um, Bach Academy is thriving and doing very well, yes. They've been an A-school for a number of years, and it would have been great to be able to sit here tonight and approve that, but I can't, because it doesn't make sense with what was submitted to us. It's one thing, as we've said, for Our Children's Prep, same thing. If the application doesn't have the necessary i- information in it, by law, I cannot accept that. So, um, I just wanted to state clearly why I will be, um, upholding the superintendent's recommendation to deny Bach Academy North. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Um, I'm gonna be voting to approve the, this, uh, agreement. Um, not sure where to start now that I've heard some of my colleagues. I, I think originally when the first Bach Academy opened, the challenge they had was, uh, finding students. And they opened it up to the surrounding community, and that created a challenge for the Lake Wales community. Yeah, I'm disappointed, frankly, in the application. It was clear, it's, is clear that, that whoever was charged with the responsibility of putting that together failed, and they didn't put it together a, a particularly good application. In fact, they didn't put together a good application at all. But the reality is, and this is a little different, I think, than Our Children's Academy, because they're, they have a divestiture issue, as I mentioned. I think this is a little different in that the, the folks that will be overseeing that school, um, have already demonstrated success, and I think that they will continue to do so. Most importantly, the one issue that I had with it, and that is the same issue Mr. Townsend has, they have, uh, um, we have a letter from their board chair saying that, that, that's won't happen with this academy. And I, I, I would like to give them the opportunity to prove that. So I have tremendous respect for the Charter Review Committee. It was not a unanimous decision, and, um, I think this is one that, no matter what we do, it's gonna end up opening. So I, I'm gonna demonstrate support for them. It's, it's in, it's in my district. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Ms. Brady, for the benefit of the public, the Charter Application Review Committee reviews applications independent of the school board, none of us are on that. Could you share with the public what the Charter Application Review Committee's vote was on this applicant?
I do not have that in front of me.
I do.
I think Ms. Cunningham.
I'll share with the group then.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to kind of put it on record so that the public would know that, uh, the eleven people on that Charter Application Review Committee, one person recused themselves because of a conflict of interest, uh, being a part of that community. Three people out of the eleven voted to approve that application, seven people voted to deny that application. That's what was brought to the superintendent, that's what's being brought to us, and you've heard many of the comments in regards to the quality of that application. And the appearance that, well, we have a good school, you ought to just give us another one, which doesn't really say much for the application itself. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to add a few more pieces of information, um, with Mr. Wilson being an accountant. Um, looking at the, um, budget and the financials, let me just provide this. Uh, fails to provide concise information regarding the funding of any proposed facility. Fails to provide a revenue worksheet for Bach Academy North. And the budget, it submits a budget which is not solvent for the first two years of operation. Includes capital outlay for the first year of operation, thirty thousand, and includes revenue from the competitive federal implementation grant for one year and two years, for one hundred eighty-seven, five, and one hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred respectively. And on the startup plan for the charter, fails to provide a thoughtful and realistic implementation plan that covers major operational items. I mean, financially, there is an issue here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a couple of comments, um, and I'll see you like, Mr. Wilson. Uh, each of us received a letter from Robin Gibson, and one of the things that Mr. Gibson attempted to do is what Ms. Cunningham referenced it, uh, was not, uh, acceptable, is coming back and trying to answer questions after the, uh, review committee has, has made their recommendation. And I think the same attempt was made by Our Children's Academy. And, and my, my thing is if we allow, uh, one group to do it and not the other, that's just not being fair. And I believe that Our Children's Academy, uh, has a very good program as well. I believe that they're making a tremendous impact, just like Bach Academy South is. Uh, however, the applications for both left a lot to be desired, and they need to be given an opportunity to go back, work with our staff, and come back next year and resubmit. The other, uh, statement that I would like to make, just for record, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Gibson said there were two items, uh, that would cause for us to approve the Bach North Charter application. And one of them was the, um, updated enclosures justifying some of the things that the staff found in error. And the other item was regardless of the merit, the application has now been approved by operation of law pursuant to the terms of Florida statute, and there's a statute name listed, rather. Can you reference that segment?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I, I know that this may come as a surprise, but it is, it is absolutely the, the case that in, in, in this situation, the two lawyers differ, uh, when it comes to their conclusions of the law. Uh, there is nothing in the statute that prohibits the parties from agreeing to extend the time. Uh, there is a, eh, there is in the statute a, a provision that, that gives special treatment to high-performing replication applications and requires the board to act within a specified period of time. That period of time ran this time during hurricane, and, uh, I don't believe that there is a circumstance, uh, that would lead a judge or a legislature to conclude that parties cannot agree to extend the time because of force majeure. Um, but that is, that, I believe that was the, the situation there, and, and the parties agreed to an extension in the time, uh, to approve this.
We, so we agreed? We, the, the, the parties agreed?
Yes, we had, we had a written agreement.
And then the lawyer says that's, that's not in effect?
Yeah, we, we had agreement, uh, Mr. Gibson. I attempted to take the position that the superintendent did not have the authority to enter into that agreement for Lake Wales. Their superintendent, not ours.
Okay.
And I, I would, I would disagree with that, but even if it, even if it were the case, it's difficult to conceive of, of a legal situation where, where people, uh, where a judge, a legislative body or judicial body would not, would not agree to that.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, please do.
Yes, you may.
Um, the, um, my office did reach out to every applicant right bef- right after IRMA, and we requested an extension of the review process because of IRMA. We requested, uh, I think it was a fourteen-day extension to all of them. We needed a written response, and we received a written response from all of our applicants to.
Thank you, and I just wanted to go on record, because I thought that was very important. Um, Mr. Wilson, you, you were next.
Um, well, first of all, let me be clear about this. I, it's not my intent to try to, um, convince my colleagues on the board otherwise, because I, the, the arguments you make are all appropriate arguments and, and very well taken. I, I guess I have the added advantage of having met with some of the leadership, and as Mr. Townsend said, there has been great discord over the years. We've had the initial meeting, it went very well, it was a very positive meeting. I've asked Mr. Huetek to continue scheduling those meetings, he's agreed to do so. So I, I hope we started the healing process. Um, in addition to that, I've had the privilege of, or I guess I've had the opportunity to sit down with some of the leadership and look over some financial records, and I suspect whoever produced this application is gonna be a little bit on the hot seat. But, um, eh, it's clear to me that they have the financial wherewithal. And again, I, I'm not asking anyone to take my, my word for that. I, I understand completely everyone's concerns, but that's primarily where I'm coming from, and I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
I, I just, I, and, and you know, I, I read, full disclose, disclose, oh, do I do this every time? Robin Gibson's my cousin, he was at my daughter's wedding, I should let everybody know, know that. Um, I, I read the letter, I just did not pick up that the position seems to be that Jesse Jackson, Jackson as the superintendent of Lake Wales Schools doesn't get to speak for Lake Wales Schools? I mean, that's odd. And, you know, I think it illustrates one of the problems we have in dealing with them. It's been a little frustrating for me, is who, who are we dealing with out there? I wish they would identify that, um, because I'd like to, would like to deal with them. So anyway, I, I just, that's very interesting to me.
Mr. Wilson?
Ms. Brady, was it Mr. Jackson that actually signed that letter?
Uh, Damian Moses responded and copied Jesse Jackson.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to deny the Edward W. Bach Academy North Charter application. There is no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay, six ayes, motion, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so Ms. Jackie, uh, this is the part of the, of the, uh, meeting where we were supposed to hear from the.
We still have the R fifty-one.
Oh, the Polk State Collegiate, okay, I'm, I'm rushing it.
And the school improvement plan.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to approve the Polk State College Collegiate High School request for a contract modification for a fifteen-year term. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Polk State College Collegiate High School request for contract modification for a fifteen-year term. Is there any discussion? Mr. Harris?
Once again, I'd like to take a position as being opposed to fifteen-year contracts. It's excessive, in my personal opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Madam Chair, let the record show I'm abstaining from, uh, voting on this item due to my relationship with Polk State College. The appropriate paperwork has been completed and will be timely filed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I don't see any other lights, so the motion is to approve the Polk State College Collegiate High School request for a contract modification for a fifteen-year term with Mr. Wilson abstaining. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one nay, one abstention, and then, uh, five ayes. Motion carries. The last item on the regular agenda is to approve the school improvement plan for Janie Howard Wilson.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the school improvement plan for Janie Howard Wilson. Uh, Mr. Will- Mr. Townsend, you're lights on.
Yeah, just, just an ex- extension of what we just talked, talked, talked about. I mean, I, th- they have all the same problems that we, we have, we, we have. They have proven they can do a lot in child's style element, uh, middle school. We have proven we can do a lot in child's style middle, middle school. Um, we really need to be working together. Bunch of, a whole bunch of Janie Howard Wilson kids are coming into McLaughlin, they're not going to Bach, and that's a community problem out there. And eh, I don't really care how it reflects on us, that's not important to me. What, what is important to me is, is, is how those kids are getting, getting served, and there is a big disconnect between the existing middle school and, and the way their, their, their elementary schools are set up. I mean, I wanna be very, very supportive, that we're in, we're in the same boat that, that, uh, Janie Howard Wel- Wel- Wilson's in, but it, it, it just shows how absurd the fight is. We, we really, we have very similar issues to them, and we need to be dealing with them, and, and they with us.
Okay, and, 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 and kind of adding on to that, I guess my question would be, and I don't know who would be able to answer it, Ms. Jackie, is what happens if Janie Howard Wilson, uh, does not move their school this, uh, school year?
I know Melissa, I believe she stepped out, but looking at their, they're in the school improvement plan right now. The board does have the option that they can either rec- make a recommendation of closure for that after the school year, looking at their performance. If they do not improve to a C, you have the right to make an option.
So similarly to what we have to do with, with our schools?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Uh, just, can I clarify that? The, so are they facing the same ch- the same three choi- choices that we are?
No, sir, they're not.
Okay, okay.
They are, they are one step behind us, correct?
No, they're a charter school.
They are?
I know they're a charter school, but.
So they're, the rules are a little bit different.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Okay. All right, the bottom line is similar to what Mr. Mr. Townsend said, is that they have some of the same issues that we have as a part of the, the public schools. All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve the school improvement plan for Janie. Janie Howard Wilson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Ms. Jackie.
Okay, so we were supposed to have a reconvening, but instead, since there has actually been agreement, I would like to ask the parties to come forward, starting with PEA, if they'd like to make a statement. All right, would you like, Jason? Okay, thank you. So Jason Vale will speak from the district side.
Okay.
That was different from what I received.
I'll probably be a lot shorter. And thank you. Good evening, members, Madam Chair. My name's Jason Vale. I'm one of the lawyers with Allen Norton &amp; Blue. I work with Mike Matamore, and he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm representing the district. As you know, we've been assisting the district throughout the impasse process. Very pleased to say tonight that we have an agreement. I just wanted to make a few remarks of how we got here. Based on your directive from the previous meeting, we heard you, and your staff and the PEA spent an enormous amount of time, energy, and resources working on this deal, and working on the numbers and the calculations in coming to this agreement. We just want to thank you for your patience, and the district wants to thank the PEA for their diligent efforts on behalf of their membership. As part of our process, the parties jointly agreed to a statement, and I believe that the president of the PEA will read that to you, and I believe she has some remarks as well that she'd like you to hear today. So we thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Ann Capizello, President of the Polk Education Association. First, I'll read the joint statement. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, the parties have reached tentative agreement which made today's hearing unnecessary. Wages for 20, modest wages, but wages for 2016-17 shall be described in the attached, but we're going to tell you them verbally. In connection with negotiations for 2017 through 18, the parties have tentatively agreed to the following. The wage attached, the attached wage schedule denoted as Exhibit D E N F. The attached agreement that there will be no changes to the plan or planned costs, including premium cost at point of service for any employees regarding health insurance. As summarized below, these agreements are in addition to the following actions the board took on October 30, 2017 legislative hearing, including maintenance of the current practice and language with respect to advanced degrees, limiting transfers to summer months for all teachers absent showing hardship, removal of the evaluation manual from Appendix M of the teacher CBA, removal of the Schedule of Benefits from Appendix K of the CBA, Appendix G of the Paraeducator CBA, and Appendix G of the ESP Collective Bargaining Agreement. Regarding Article 15 in the Teacher CBA Evaluations and Health Insurance, Articles 23 in the Teacher CBA, and Articles 12 in the ESP CBA, and Articles 14 in the Paraeducator CBA, the parties will continue to bargain and clarify the language based upon the dialogue at the October 30, 2017 legislative hearing, with the goal of finishing no later than December 5, 2017. If the parties are unable to tentatively agree to the articles stated in this paragraph by the stated goal of December 5, 2017, the parties agree to submit the issues resolved through impasse and tentatively agreed upon articles negotiated during the 2016-17 bargaining cycle for ratification pursuant to law within 30 days. Union officers and bargaining team members are free to voice their views and opinions with respect to any tentatively agreed upon items during this ratification process. Teacher CBA, and it's also in the Para and ESP contracts, 22.27. In the event that the Florida Legislature significantly changes the expected funding level received from the Florida Education Finance Program, FEFP, including all of its components at any time during the term of this agreement, the parties agree to discuss and review any concern raised by either party. Current language again, 22.27-1. In the event that there becomes a reason to expect an excess of funding, the parties agree to determine the amount of such excess and discuss enhancing current employee compensation. The parties recognize that through mutual agreement and ratification by the parties, the current agreed-upon compensation could be changed. For information purposes, we wish to alert the school board that our plan is to begin the ratification process in December for both 2016-17 and 17-18. The district assures us that they will make every effort to have the retro pay in the January check. If that timeline proves impossible, the pay will then be on the February 18, 2018 check. So first, I'd like to start with a few things. We did have good discussion at October 30. It was a rather unusual impasse hearing in a lot of ways. We then met last Thursday with the district finance, Jason Pitts, Mr. Perrone, and Brian Warren from HR. And we actually were able to come to agreement on the numbers we base these calculations on. The importance of that was that we were not leaving any money on the table when we came to this modest agreement. We had a couple of goals, to make sure that we were taking every bit of money we could to actually go to real people, not ghost people, to make sure that we understood the numbers, to try to see if we can do what we could do to get as much money on the table as we wanted to try to get retro. We worked for over five hours to come to that agreement, and then from using that agreement, we were able to cost the four scenarios that you received. We have tentatively agreed to number four, which gives retro for half a year. So I want to put that in context, a few things in context actually, so people understand that this agreement has moved us substantially, maybe not as far as any of us would like to go, but has moved us substantially farther than where we started. Because we started with an insurance proposal that would have done a $13 million cost shift for 2016, excuse me, for 2017, and we were able to not make any insurance changes in 2017. And we were also able to agree, we've already tentatively agreed for 2018, to have no changes to the insurance. Why that is important is because any dollars we've driven into somebody's wallet will not go out in insurance costs. We started with a freeze for all wages. We briefly even toyed around, the district toyed around with trying to talk about a bonus, but we ended up where we are now with money, with it coming, with the proposal that you had at your hearing, which was from July 2017, and which would have effectively been a 16-17 freeze. And we've been able to come to an agreement where we will be able to get retro pay to January of 2017, for 2016-17, and to July 1, retro pay for 2017-18. Advanced degrees, we've agreed to maintain advanced degrees, and we are already beginning discussion, clarifying discussion on health insurance and evaluation, which is what we're hoping that we'll be able to come to agreement on, so that we don't have to put out only 16-17. I'd like to bring up Angela Dawson now, who's going to talk about the difference, a little bit about the pay of where we are, so that folks can understand why we've accepted this agreement.
Since I'm sure you haven't had a chance to read all 25 pages of documents, I have a cheat sheet to kind of give you an example here. If you have a teacher that's on the grandfathered scale, that is someone that has been teaching in excess of seven years in Polk County, because only people that are on the professional services contract can be on the grandfathered scale. In 16-17, we would add $599 to their base salary. In 17-18, we would add $299 to their base salary, which means their new base salary goes up by $898 for a grandfathered teacher. And when you talk about the retro pay, you get part of the retro pay in 16-17, and because we're already halfway through the year in 17-18, they're going to get a retro pay in 17-18, that person would see about $749 in a retro pay, along with their new base salary. So they're going to see an increase to their salary, and they're going to get all their retro pay in January or February, hopefully January, that's what we're hoping. So a total increase for that grandfathered teacher is almost $1,200. If you take a pay-for-performance teacher annual contract, a new employee with less than the seven years of experience, it gets a little more complicated, because it has to be based on their rating of effective or highly effective. And so we've costed it out what would happen if you were highly effective in both years, and what would happen if you were effective in both years. But understand, if you were highly effective in one year, and then effective in another year, you'd have to do a combination of those. And so just an example, a highly effective teacher in 16-17 would get $900, and in 17-18 would get $600, so that their new base goes up by $1,500. And because of the retro pay, the half of year in 16-17 and a half of year in 17-18, they would get retro of $1,200. So that total for that teacher, their salary would go up by $1,950. An effective teacher in both years would get $600 in 16-17 and $300 in 17-18, for a total of $900 added to their base salary. Their retro pay would be $750, and so that means for a total for them is $1,200 that they would see added into their salary come January, February. The pares and secretaries, we didn't change their scale, but they did earn experience steps. So if you had someone that was on a step five, they would move to step six in 16-17, and then step seven in 17-18. And because every scale is a little bit different, there is no hard and fast number, but it's all somewhere between like $420 and $520, so let's just use $500 to be even, so that you can do the calculations. That would mean that they would get $250 retro pay for 16-17, and then they would get $250 retro pay in 17-18. Their base would have gone up $500 in each year, and then they would have gotten $500 in retro pay. And I hope I've said that correctly. So that's what we've built into the salary schedule to award experience and make sure that people's years of experience still match their salary schedule, because that's important to our staff. And that's just a short summary of what you have done for the employees.
At the end of the day, if you go back to the scenarios you were sent, and the costing, what you told us of where you wanted the fund balance to be, the initial proposal that PEA made took the fund balance down to 2-point-something. It's been a long day. 2.60, I think. And we knew that we also, at that point, that brings the DOE in. And also, we end up with situations like what happened in Manatee, and what is happening now in Hillsborough, where they have a salary that they can't afford to fund, and we don't want to do that. We will tell you that we, there are two things I probably want to end with. One is that the incessant starvation by the state of Florida is an issue that must be handled. And so as you move forward, we hope that your school board association and your superintendents association look into the validity of doing an adequacy lawsuit, because the state constitution says that public education shall be adequately funded, and they are not meeting their constitutional obligation. And it's time for us to start to fight back together. Our legislators, and I can say this, but you can't, but our legislators are part of the problem, not part of the solution. And if they don't want to get on board, they need to get out of the way. Further, we hope that we can see that impasse wastes an extraordinary amount of time and energy. And it is our hope, as we move forward, that we first of all do what we did up front, what we did here at the end, which is have that conversation regarding salaries, regarding the numbers, getting all those things up front. I think that both the district finances, Mr. Perrone and Ms. Porteous and her department agree that this was a beneficial thing to do, and we hope we move forward doing that. And then the other piece is that we continue to say what we've said all along. When you have limited finances, you as a board must look at every dollar you expend, understanding that you have employees that you've made commitments to. I understand that a little bit of money has to go a long way, but you don't move your mission without the men and women who help run this school system. Thank you.
I have a question. Am I allowed to ask?
Okay, I see quite a few lights on. I'll start with Mr. Harris.
Mr. Perrone, I have a question of clarification, if you could share with us. She indicated that proposal number four on the handout that we received is the one that the group has reached agreement on, but line 25, and, excuse me, line 24 and line 34, there are two dramatically different percentages of fund balance. Could you clarify with the next line underneath, which is 25 and 35, what those numbers are and how they were arrived at? And which one will we end up with as a fund balance projection?
Yes, sir. So one of the takeaways from October 30 was to bring different scenarios, which we did, and also look at the effect of fund balance, both with and without using the capital transfer. So this year, or in past years, we transferred 8.4 million of expense in the general fund to capital, so we freed up 8.4 million in general fund every year. And we stopped doing that two years ago, three years ago. And so for two years, we did not transfer the 8.4. And this year, the board, during budget deliberations, we only transferred 4.2, so half of it. I believe it was Mr. Wilson asked about that and how that would look, and that's when we went back. So let me just go back to your original question, I wanted to clarify that. So the line 24, 4.26, is the proposal without transferring that additional 4.2.
So only transferring 4.2, not 8.4?
Correct, right, yes, yes. And then 25 is if we did do the additional 4.2 for the total, back to what we used to do, which is 8.4. And so that's the 4.83. And the 34 and 35 are again the same. So in the budget deliberations coming up, we would transfer the 8.4, and you were projecting that we'd be at line 35, which is the 4.16. If that transfer is not made, then we would project it at 2.46.
For clarification for the public, that money is transferred from the capital budget over to general fund, meaning we have less money to maintain the schools.
Yes, sir.
We need to have at least some money set aside for the buckets to go into the classrooms when we can't repair roofs. Now, I'm saying that in jest, but I want the public to understand that this is a transfer of money from the funds used to maintain the schools for the teachers to work in. You can't continue to do that and maintain your schools at the level of which the community would like to see its schools maintained. At some point, you have to pay the piper.
Yes, sir. And that's why I made the comment that until we gain additional revenue funding from the state, then at some point, if that does come in, the board can then make that decision to not do the transfer, but until then, you know, our hands are tied.
That's probably going to take different leadership in the House of Representatives.
Well, the governor's budget came out, which I'm not holding my breath, but it does look pretty good.
Well, like I said, leadership in the House has to change.
All right, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Perrone, I'm looking at that line where it shows the ending fund balance of 4.16. It shows a transfer of 12.6 million. Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, we're reading cumulative, because it's for... Yeah, we're reading cumulative because it's 4.2 this year. And then the whole eight, every year we would appropriate that. So it's a different outside of the.
Oh, okay, I'm with you. I got it.
Yeah, Jason and I walked and went through that one quite a bit.
Ms. Reynolds?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you on both bargaining teams for working up until the very last possible second to come to an agreement. I think we all appreciate not having to sit through an impasse again tonight. But we appreciate all of your hard work. So thank you guys all very much for everything you've done.
Very much so.
Ms. Sellers?
I just had a question on the retro pay. Is, these are just for, retro pay is only going to go to current people employed with us, correct? And, and do we need to have some formal statement?
Well, that's past practice. That's what we've always done. So it's people that are here with us, yes.
Okay, and I too.
The only people who actually get retro pay are the people here upon ratification. That's, that's the, that's the demarcation line and has been for forever.
Thank you. And I too, when I saw, I want to say to PEA, when I saw your second proposal, I really had a hard time with the first one. I couldn't understand the finances. I couldn't understand how it worked out. But I think it was a win-win for both of us. Both the district, and I think you really did take into consideration our, the reoccurring expenses. And I really do appreciate that because it's never been that we did not want to give a raise. And I have to say, the, the painful statement that we don't care or respect our teachers when we don't give them a decent raise, that's simply not true. We can never give you the decent raise that you deserve under the funding model that we have now. We have no control over what comes into this district. And I know the superintendent is tired of seeing me because I continually want more resources into our schools, especially our most challenged schools. And so it's a real battle for me because I see no more boots on the ground needed in many of our schools. And all of that costs money. But I do appreciate, I was really heartened by this second proposal. I felt it was reasonable. And I did feel you listened to us about the fund balance and the problem we have with the reoccurring expenses with no new money. So thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to say thank you to the teams. We asked you to go back, relook at it, put numbers together and come back with numbers. And we asked for them to be delivered by Friday and they were delivered by Friday so that we could review everything in enough time. So I thank staff for doing that. I know you all worked hard today and it's late, so I'll be brief. I just want to tell everybody how much we appreciate it. And I do want to say though, looking forward as we go into the next set of bargaining meetings, I really, really think that we need to begin our budgeting process looking at our steps. There is something to be said about moving teachers to the steps. We're two years behind and we need to get to that. The way I understand it, the way my corporate world works is you first give steps. And then if there's extra monies allowed, then you're able to give an increase on top of that in those better years. So I want to see us get back to what I call the basics and increase on steps first. And then after that, if there's a good year, we negotiate, we give a little bit more. If it's a leaner year, we talk about it. But I think that is what I'm continually hearing is the reason for the comments of no respect and so on and so forth. Because the steps, both for ASME and for PEA, mean a whole lot. It's kind of like, I teach for you, that's the, and my reward may not be a big bonus, may not be a big pay increase. But if I can at least move my steps appropriately, then I feel respected. And like I said, in years where we have more money, super, then we could go above and beyond that. So I want to say, challenge my team at the district as one board member. As you go in and start talking, let's look at moving our teachers up and our others up to the steps that they need to be at. Because right now, we're two years behind. And I understand we're given a good, a somewhat of a modest raise, I should say, not great. And I know that we can do it. You proved it tonight. And there was a young lady who spoke on October 30th, and I did not forget that. And her last statement was, mission, mission possible. You made mission possible tonight. And I want us to continue that. So thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of things. I, I, this is very good news. The one downside to it is that it took 15 months to get here. And, and I think what you see in this is the value of confrontation, of meaningful, good faith confrontation. We finally confronted each other two week, two weeks ago. We could have confronted each other meaningfully 15 months ago and probably gotten to something that looked like this to choose from. This is what I've wanted all along, something like this where I knew what I was choosing. And once those choices get laid out, clearly the choices tend to make themselves. And I think that's what happened here. I, the problem with the 15-month issue, and we have to, we do have to go back and say, the original offer was nothing. And we've come a long way from that. I'm pleased, I'm pleased to see. But there is a, what I'll call sort of a morale opportunity cost of that 15 months, of that 12 months of bad vibes. We've, we're going to have to work past those together. And I'm not going to dwell on them anymore. I, I want to learn, everything, everything we do, I want to be a learning experience for the next time we do it. I'm not here to yell at anybody. I'm not here to jump up and down. Let's learn from this. Let's learn from the value of that meeting where, where, where we made each other miserable for seven hours and then got a deal in two weeks. Let's do that again. Or, or even do it fa- 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 faster than that. And let's, let's learn about the value of confronting hard things in their, look them in the eye and deal with them and come up with solutions to, to them. We can do it and we need to do it together. And finally, I want to say this. The Florida model of education has had one enemy for 25 years. Well, it's, well, we're all its ene- ene- enemy. But who it's named over and over again is unions. There's, they, I, I tend to think the importance of, of unions, no offense, e- e- either way, is vastly overrated. I think there are about a million other things that are more important in education. But you guys have been singled out over and over and over again as, as the Darth Vader of education. And it's, and it's, and it's wrong. And I want to particularly thank Mary Ann. She's never once misled me in, in anything she's told, told me. She's never, you know, she, we have had very frank conversations. The information I've gotten from her and Angela is outstanding, outstanding. And to be the face of a, a union in Florida means you take abuse. And I, I don't like it when people are abused. To, to the extent I ever abuse anybody, it's, it's, I'm trying to stop, stop people from abusing people. And so I just want us all to, to, to think about all of that and move forward. This is good news. We could have had it sooner, but let's, let's think about what we can do in the future. And also thanks very much to Mike and Jason and Tedra for, I know where you guys have been all, all along. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I wanted to know, is any of the lapse monies a part of this fund balance?
So the lapse, every year we achieve lapse. And so we projected that lapse in and we've taken revenue out for the cost of these things. So when I project the numbers and the fund balance going out to the end of this year and out to next year, that's all included in the whole fund balance, the lapse that goes in and the, the fund balance that we had budgeted. So yes, it's, it's kind of a in and out. And then we're adding the capital. So we have money going out with the raises and lowering of the, the lapse or the fund balance, which a part of the fund balance is lapse. So I can't give you.
Do you have an estimated amount?
Of how much we're, well, for this year, when you look at the fact that we projected the fund balance to be about 5.1 before we started talking salaries and the transfer back. And we were projecting 4.26. So that's not quite 1%. And we say 1% is about seven and a half million. So I'd say about 7 million of fund balance is being used, Mrs. Fields. And that, so part of that is lapse, part of it's just the fund balance that's rolled or that we budgeted in the beginning of the year. So I can't really pinpoint which part is which, but about a million of fund bal- uh, 1% or 7 million will be reduced from our current fund balance projection. So we'll use about that much. And that's everybody. That's not just PEA. That's all the different groups.
Okay, and thank you for answering that. And the other thing is, I want to kind of go back to what Mr. Harris talked about. By utilizing a total extra capital of $12.6 million, that at some point in time, we're going to have to look at how that's going to impact our schools. And I think that we need to hear from facilities on being specific on what that means at some point in time. Maybe at a work session, Ms. Jackie?
Yes.
Because I think it's critical and it's very important for everyone to understand. And I, I heard you loud and clear where you said, right now, we don't have a choice in the matter. And I understand that. But I also understand that our schools have to be kept as well. And I, I want to just reiterate what everybody else has said. I want to commend everybody for their hard work. We know it was hard. Want to thank everyone and, and just for continuously pushing on. And I didn't realize that you guys were working while we were having the board meeting. So that's a good thing. And so I would just say, well done.
If I could just take one more minute and talk about the 1718 settlement. I just wanted to give you the, the total cost of that was not quite 3 million. So the bulk of that, the whole proposal and the agreement is for the 1617. And so that will affect the fund balance numbers that you have here a little bit. And so I didn't want to leave tonight without mentioning that. So we still should end this year at four, over four, which was again, the takeaway that we took that. However, again, if we continue to just get zero funding, or even if it's a reduction, then we may drop below 4% in the second year. So, so there are just little caution, but that's a ways out. And hopefully within an election year, we'll see some money in, from the, the session this year. For only hope.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I also would like to thank our, the members of our negotiating team as well as the PEA for working to make this happen. You know, former school board member Dick Mullenax used to say that we'll never be able to pay our teachers what they're worth. And that's an exceptionally profound statement. And it begs the question, why not? And my answer follows. In order to affect a pay increase, whether it's a step increase or pay raise or, or whatever that pay increase may be, there has to be new recurring revenue because that's a recurring cost. And the district doesn't control new recurring revenue. We have no control over that whatsoever. That's our challenge. When I came on board, I was convinced that we were top-heavy in administration. What I found is that there's no truth to that. We're quite lean. The reality is, our, many, most of, much of our administrative cost is mandated by the state and federal government. Ball State University recently conducted a study. They found that 15 to 20% of their administrative overhead is mandated by federal and state governments. And our state has significantly more mandates than the state of Indiana. So we could have as much as 30, 40% of our administrative overhead is mandated. We have no control over it. And it frustrates me significantly when we have leaders in Tallahassee saying, our schools are bloated with administration, when they're forcing those, forcing us to endure those costs. It's, it's just, it's just extremely frustrating. The first couple of years I was on the board, we did get new recurring revenue, $30 million worth. And we did redistribute every penny of that to our employees. So we very much want to ensure that our employees get those, those raises when, when we can get that, when we get that new recurring revenue. And I'm sure we'll continue to do that in the future. And finally, you know, I continue to hear that we're not interested in working with fund balance, but we've done that. We've demonstrated this year that we, we will, to the best of our ability, work with fund balance if we need to, to try to make raises available to our, to our teachers and our employees. And I know they're not significant raises, but at least we're able to show that we, we do care. And, and finally, the point of this is to say this. We're all going to have to work together and lobby our, our legislators to ensure that we get the funding that we need for our school district. It's critical. And I, I, I agree with your statement. We may have to be very aggressive. I know we've had some frank conversations as a board with our legislators. And maybe we'll have to continue having those conversations. So those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, just very, very, very quickly. I think the, the answer to the capital problems are both the sales, sales tax is absolutely vital. We have to do everything. That's, that's why it's important for us to be aligned as, as well. And secondly, keep pushing on the .5 mil. I mean, I'd, I'd vote for that tomorrow. And all they have to do is give it to us. And, and you know, that, that affects capital spending ending as well. We used to have it, you know, back in 2000, what, '07, '08? So there's, the only reason not to give it back to us is spite and fear. You know, and, and I guess those, those are the, the two things I would add to, to the. The capital concern is absolutely a legitimate one, but that's what the answer is to it.
Mary Ann?
Okay. Two things. We, we stand ready to work with you on all of that. We do appreciate your legislative platform because it does address some of these issues. And I, I would be remiss if I did, I realized, because in a haste to move along, I did want to thank the superintendent for getting her team back to the table and for you to sending us back to the table because we were able to do some good work. And I think move the, not only did we come to a settlement, but I believe we've moved the process forward. And I think that's always a good thing. So forgive me. And the other thing is, is I get a lot of credit, but there are men and women, some of whom are not here tonight, but the PEA bargaining team. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I honor each and every one of them and the time that they give up to do the background work that we do before we come to the table. So the PEA bargaining team and the PEA staff are just tremendous. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jackie, it's all yours. First, I would like to say, I want to thank everyone that really contributed. It was long hours, I can tell you. They were working to the very last minute. They were texting me and I was texting them over here. So I was paying attention, Madam Chair and board members, but we were texting back and forth. So thanks to everyone. I know it's been some long evenings and it's been some long days, but it was great work. So thank you for all of it. And our teachers appreciate it and our staff appreciate the work that you've put in. So thank you. At this time, I do believe, and I'm going to try to get this right now, that we're at the organization. Am I correct, Wes? Real organization, okay. And because I do not have the mechanism on my computer to tally the votes, could you, we're going to ask that you do a show of hands when, at a time, because I can't, I do not have the tally. And the ladies over here are going to help me. Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the November 14, 2017, meeting of the School Board of Polk County, Florida. The board chair has called the meeting to order and pursuant to Florida statute 1,001 dash point 371, I, as superintendent, will act as chair into the organization of the board has been completed. At this time, request all cell phones and/or pagers be turned off or put on silent mode. Our next order of business is to elect the board chair. I will use the following procedure. Any moment, I will open the floor for nominations. After board members have had ample time to make all nominations they wish, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. Afterwards, I will conduct a roll call vote by district. Please make sure you have a show of hands, beginning with the first candidate nominated. If there's a majority for the first nominee, the election of the board chair will be complete and will move to the election of the vice chair. If there is not a majority in favor of the first nominee, there will be a roll call vote for the second nominee. The process will continue, will continue until a board chair is elected by majority vote. I will use the same method in the election of the vice chair. Are there any questions? Very good. You're listening. I will now accept nominations for chairman. Nominations do not require a second. Allow time for nominations. Now I will attain a motion that nominations at this time be. Allow time for nominations. Now I will attain a motion that nominations at this time be taken. Are there any nominations? For chairman? Mr. Townsend?
I'd like to nominate Lynn Wilson for chair.
That was mine.
Any other nominations? Okay. I will now entertain a motion that nominations be closed.
So moved?
Second.
Well, there's not a need for the roll call.
Well, you should do it.
So now we will move to accept the nominations for vice chair. Are we ready? I'm trying to make sure. Ready, ladies? At this time, are there nominations for the vice chair? Show of hands. Mr. Harris?
Ms. Cunningham.
Are there any other nominations? At this time, the nominations now are closed. Do we have a motion?
Move to close the nominations?
Second.
Now that we have moved and seconded the nominations, we now have our chair and vice chair.
That wasn't part of the script, was it?
No. Okay. The next meeting is, the next item is the designation of time, date, and place of the school board meetings. I recommended the school, that the work sessions be held on the 2nd and the 4th Tuesday in the superintendent's conference room at 9:00 AM and 12:30 PM respectively. School board meetings to be held on the 4th Tuesday at 5:00 PM in the school board auditorium at 1915 South Flor Avenue, Bartow, Florida. Additional meetings will be scheduled as needed. I will now entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have a vote?
A little bit, a little bit of discussion. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Tim. Tim was first.
You have a discussion?
I just, I was curious about addressing the young woman's issue. If we could schedule any of those work sessions. I don't know if we have to do it here, but like down the line. But I kind of liked having the 2:30 one that went right into the meeting. I don't know, maybe one at 2:30, one at noon. Just a thought. And maybe even have a work session in the evening at some point, so people can come and hear. Just, I don't know if that has to be built into what you're doing right now, or just be things to consider.
Mr. Townsend, that is not part of the script.
Yeah, I'm bad about that. I'm sorry.
What will, I will get with the chair?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Harris?
I brought up the same issue numbers of years ago, and I started public service back in 1979. And I had the same concern that the public be given a chance, even though most of the time when the meetings are scheduled in the evenings, the public doesn't avail themselves. But it's one of those things I could, if I wanted to. And sometimes that satisfies a lot of people, that they can attend, because the meeting is scheduled in most people's non-working hours. It would not be something that I would certainly vote against. I would certainly support. But from the staff's point of view, it is a challenge when you have night meetings, especially when we have work sessions preceding the night meetings. It makes for a very difficult day for staff. But from the standpoint of making the meetings more available to the public, that is something I have advocated for a long time and certainly would support if we came to make that decision.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm wondering if we want to talk about this at a work session. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? And then, and then set the schedule at a later date? Okay.
Or you can approve it now and then, just amend it.
An amendment later?
That's why, so we can approve it now and then, we can adjust.
At least we're getting the conversation on the table.
Do we have a vote?
I think we need, a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Have a vote?
It's on our screen?
Oh, we had the motion.
I think we already had the motion. Are we ready to vote?
And it's on our screen to vote.
To vote.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. She has it. The final, the final item is approval of Resolution 2017-2018-06. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that one. It is the recommendation that the proceeding of the school board meetings be held in accordance with the Robert's Rules of Order, revised and the rules of the administrative procedures act. I will entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The final item is approval of Resolution 2017-2018-06, authorizing the banks of Polk County, Florida, as suppositories of school funds to honor and cash warrants drawn against said funds, will sign, when signed by the board chair and secretary of the board. I will now entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
As long as the chair is bondable.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes carry. This completes the organization of the school board of Polk County as required by law. I will now yield the gavel to our new school board chair.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I guess at this time, we're ready for your report.
Okay. First off, I would like to, before we begin, next week is going to be a week that we'll all be with family, friends, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I would like to say to all of our staff, please make sure you take this time to be with your family and your friends and enjoy them. They are very important. The next work session will be held at 12:30 PM on Tuesday, December 12, 2017, in the superintendent's conference room.
We changed that.
Oh, that's right.
To Monday, the 11th.
December the 11th, 2017, the superintendent's conference room. But, followed by the 5:00 PM school board meeting, held in the auditorium located at 1915 South Flor Avenue, Bartow, Florida. This concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Attorney, do we have a report?
Mr. Chair, congratulations, Mrs. Cunningham, congratulations, and my compliments to all of the folks who worked on our agreement this evening. I think that Winston Churchill once famously made mention of blood, toil, tears, and sweat. And I think we saw all of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Matthews, do we have a report? No report? Thank you. Thank you. So now we'll go into our board members' reports. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, just very, very briefly, I want to thank the, that was also remiss in not thanking the superintendent for her direction and work in getting this deal done. I apologize for that. I was doing it through my, through my mic and Jason, but I, thank you.
You're welcome, but it was a team.
And I also appreciate the board working with me on moving the meeting to the 11th. I know that was a pain, but I appreciate that. Thanks. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Cunningham?
Thank you. Let me first congratulate you, Mr. Wilson, on being our new chair. I think you're going to do a fantastic job.
Looking for lots of help.
And also would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Fields for her time and tenure over the last few years of being our chair and leading us through some interesting times that we have had, financially and otherwise. You always come to the table with such grace and elegance, and you're always such a lady, and you're compassionate, and you truly care about children. And it's been a pleasure having you as our chair, and thank you for your time and talent, and also that of your lovely husband, because we all know that to do this kind of job, you have to have support behind the scenes. So I'm sure Gao has done his fair share of supporting you as our chair. So. Yes, ma'am. Couple things real quick for me. Haynes City High School is going to be having their fall production of Clue on December 7th, 8th, and 9th at 7:30 at the school. So if you're looking for something to do, it's going to be a murder mystery, and it should be a lot of fun, and some audience participation and so forth. So if you get a chance to come on out and support Haynes City High School, we would absolutely love that. I also would like to say kudos to the cast crew and teachers of Thoroughly Modern Millie, which was held at the Harrison School for the Arts. To me, it was one of the neatest productions I've ever seen, because it combined the acting talent, if you will, with the creative musical talent that the school has, and kind of combined them in a way that I've not seen done before. So I thought it was one of the best productions that I've had the opportunity to see. So I do also want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Thanksgiving, and hope you spend time with your families and, you know, have some wonderful livations and some great food, and take a moment to thank, to thank those around you whom you love for what you have, because I know times are tough for everybody, but we all have things to be very thankful for. And just don't forget to count your blessings, particularly at this time of year. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and look forward to seeing everybody in November. Thank you, Madam Chair, or Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I'm going to call you Madam Chair yet. Just wait.
I'll still respond.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mrs. Sellers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to you and to Mrs. Cunningham. Hopefully you'll have a good year. And I want to thank my good friend, Ms. Fields. You've done a wonderful job the last two years, some difficult times, and you have the grace and charm and stamina to get us through. So thank you. I appreciate it more than you know. And of course, I want to thank both our teams. I was so frustrated leaving without conclusion at our impasse meeting. And I've got to learn to quit worrying. I pray for wisdom all the time, and I must have a hard hat. God gives us wisdom, and sometimes we don't notice it because I worried. And I really realized that it was actually for the best. I think it was a win-win for both the district and the teachers. And it came out to a better conclusion, because it was extended. So thank you. I know the hard work. I, I hope that we never have to go through that again. For me, I keep worrying about our budget. I'm concerned. I look at it. I spend too much time on it. But I hope that the state comes forward with a little more money, so they, they don't continually put us in this situation. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I want to thank some schools. Harrison with Thoroughly Modern Millie. It was a wonderful production, because they've got a staff that can direct those kids to do phenomenal things. I attended Summerlin Academy, always has a 9/11 remembrance. And it is, it brings tears to your eyes. But those instructors, those teachers have taught those kids, because the kids put on that ceremony. They've taught them how to step up and be leaders. So thank you to Summerlin. Mulberry High School does a Veterans Day program, the same day. The same thing. I saw tons of kids understanding and listening to the importance, what our veterans have done for us, and the importance of this country and what we stand for. And that's because the teachers and staff take the time to do that. And that's extra work on everybody. So thank you to all of our schools for what you do for our kids. I wish everybody a very, very happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully we'll come back and have a great rest of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Ms. Fields?
Congratulations, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Congratulations to you and Ms. Cunningham. I also want to echo what Lori and Hazel said about Thoroughly Modern Millie. I, the acting was incredible. I work at a theater. I spend a lot of time around scenic designers. The scenic design, the everything moving and turning, and the technicians, how quickly they hustle to move the sets on and off the stage was mind-blowing. And I sent Dr. Ward a note saying they could come volunteer at Theater Winter Haven anytime they want, because we would love to have them. They were, it was stunning, the whole thing. And then also Summerlin's 9/11 performance that we went to the other morning. One of the students on the way out that I was speaking with is a sophomore. And he was like, yeah, he was like, you know, the seniors are the only ones left that were alive for 9/11, which I think is a great tribute to what those instructors are teaching them, that they weren't even born when this happened, and they still realize the significance and how important it is to our country. So, just echoing that. But, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Harris?
Madam Chair, I'm certainly looking forward to that kilt. I'm sure the kilt will fit your image just fine, right?
Perhaps you'll buy me one.
Just wanted to bring attention and just recognize a couple of people who are no longer with us. We have lost two of our longtime principals in the last six weeks. October the 28th, there was a ceremony to celebrate the life of Pam Henderson. She was a former principal at Dundee Elementary at her last assignment. Many of you might also remember her at Boone Middle years prior to that. A very beautiful remembrance ceremony was held on October the 28th for Pam Henderson. Some of you know her husband. He worked for us for several years, Steve Henderson. And he was in charge of risk management and insurance at the time. And they, the world has lost a great teacher, a great principal, and as well, something I didn't know about Pam is she was a great artist. And a lot of her artwork was on display at the church. Also, last Tuesday, Darrell Bailey, his funeral was held. And Darrell was my first assistant principal when I started 42 years ago at Kathleen Junior High in those days. And Darrell taught me something that I have never forgotten, and I have shared with a lot of people throughout my career. And sometimes it comes in handy. It's easier to get forgiveness than it is to get permission. And I'll never forget Darrell for that. And he, the last assignment that I recall, he was principal of West Area Adult School. And Darrell was around for a number of years also. On a more positive note, tomorrow I have the opportunity to speak as part of the Great American Teach-In, where members of the community come into schools and talk about their role in the community, and encourage the kids to seek employment and talk about their employment, and how the kids can aspire once they get out of school to that. And I'll be going back to my old haunts at Lake Gibson Middle School now. And I'll be speaking there tomorrow morning to a advanced American, I think it's a civics class, they told me, which was what I taught for a number of years. Also, another positive I'd like to share and give some recognition to three businesses who contributed a total of $12,000 to the district to help celebrate a professional development activity that the district had. Kelly Services helped out with $500. Mid-Florida Credit Union with $1,500, and RP Funding contributed $10,000 to that professional development opportunity. And I would certainly like to give a shout-out to them for their support, so that the taxpayers of this community didn't have to shoulder that expense. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I would like to thank Mrs. Fields for her two years of service as board chair. You have led us through some very difficult times and situations, so very gracefully. So thank you so very much for your leadership. I want to thank all my colleagues on the board for your confidence in me to serve as board chair, and I look forward to working with you and our superintendent in moving our district forward in positive ways over the next year. And finally, I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and hope everyone has an opportunity to spend time with your friends and family. And that concludes my comments. Mr. Attorney, do we need to open it up for speakers at this time?
Yes, sir. It would be, we have not yet had the opportunity for members of the audience who are addressing items not on the agenda.
Okay. So is there anyone who would like to speak about items not on the agenda? Mr. Milhorne?
First of all, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Wilson, you, Ms. Cunningham, and thank Ms. Fields for what she is. She's always been, like they said, gracious, and she's always been kind to us. So I just want to thank her for her service. Also, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe. I'll be going out of state myself, so y'all travel and make sure you're safe when you go. And I also want to congratulate PEA on working on sealing their contract. I know how Mary Ann feels right now, because, like I said, 15 months of bargaining, and finally having and finally having that come to an end. She's probably going to sleep a little better tonight, not worrying about what am I going to do tomorrow to help move this forward. So I do want to congratulate her, and I do want to thank the district's team for working with her, and the superintendent for seeing foresight to put that together and get a conclusion to all the negotiations. And like I said, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and y'all have good travels.
Thank you, Mr. Milhorne. Are there any other speakers? Reverend Mincy?
I guess I have to say, congratulations to you, Mr. Wilson, and my eye's going to be on you now, right across, right across the field from me, in Winter Haven.
We'll, we'll have lunch again.
The church right across the field from the college, so we thank you, and Ms. Cunningham, congratulations to you and to Ms. Fields. Time to time I did make a call to her, and she's always responded, and we just, I want to say tonight, thank you to all of you board members that serve so graciously, and things have not been so good as we know, and we yet have a whole lot of work that we have to do. I want to say to Mary Ann, the Lord works in mysterious ways, His wonders are to perform. I told you, I think you listened to me finally, amen, about our legislators, amen, and that's who I put the ball, the load on their shoulders because they are the men and women that have made a lot of our problems. And just a few weeks ago, I don't know if y'all read in the paper, but our governor, amen, said it was the system, but he was a part of the system, amen. Our state board, our federal government, and, and all of the things that y'all were talking about, the charters and all of this, it, it's so sad that we are almost being resegregated again in another kind of way. So I, I thank God for the charters in, in some instances, but amen, also, we know that there are charters that have problems and failure. I mean, you just said tonight that Janice Wilson is being brought to you, and it's, it's, it's so sad that we have all of these things that are happening. But the thing that we got to remember is that, as has been said, if we can come together and work as a group and fight hard to accomplish, amen, the thing, because the one thing that we are concerned about is all of our children, and it is very important that we do all we can, and I thank God for the teachers, I, I think about them, and I pray for them, and I pray for, I pray for this whole district, amen, on a continuum, because I know that it is challenging to have to go through the things that they go through, and then not to get compensated. I was so tempted, called superintendent, say, forget the fund balance, amen, tell them let's forget it, amen, because the people need to be treated fair. But I know that the state put a whole lot upon you, and you have to maintain all of the things that they ask of you to do. So we are praying that the legislators' hearts and mind will be changed, that things will be better as we go forward, and in the negotiations that you will be able to be compensated in a fair way. So that's my prayer, and that's my thoughts tonight. God bless you, amen, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, amen, and as has been said, enjoy your family, amen, and be thankful that we have what we have. God bless us, is my prayer.
Thank you, Bishop Mincy. Are there any, are there any other speakers? Well, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.